This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, almost back to normal.
Can't wait for the morning.
The glasses hide it, so.
Maybe she won't hit me.
Great. Yeah, it's fine. Thank you.
It was good. Lot of driving. Oh, yeah.
Anybody else need a minute?
Thank you. Ready whenever you are, Mr. Mayor.
Nine o'clock, all right. Let's call this meeting to order. Very formal today. Is anybody not here that you were expecting?
No, everyone's here.
Okay. With that, I will turn it over to you.
Okay. So, thank you all for being here. Heather, do you want to do the roll call? Horse, please.
All right, I've never done this. So what, I have to score on the table and call it right away?
Yep. That's it.
All right. Commissioner Donald Miller?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Steve Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Charlie Morgan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Jeffwater?
Here.
Commissioner Cameron Watt?
Here.
I'm Andrew Frank.
I'm here.
All right.
All righty, and we'll have a motion to adopt the agenda as it is.
Motion.
Seven, eight, all in favor. All righty. And we'll get started with the format and the goals for today's meeting.
Yeah, great. First of all, thank you all for making time and for being here today. I know it's a potentially long day, and I just want you to know that I appreciate your time and your input and your feedback here today. I know this is a long meeting, and I know there are probably several things on here that you all have varying degrees of familiarity and history with. And this will be very helpful to me to learn better what your priorities are, learn more about what you would like to achieve for the town next year, and also help me gain some of that history and context for some of the items that you all probably have talked about before. And I want to hear what your thoughts are. So, thank you all for making this time today. I hope that the long day today will result in a much smoother, more efficient process as we go forward later on in the budget process. Y'all have probably heard me say this before. I honestly think this is the most important exercise that you all, as the town's leaders, go through each year, because it's really a matter of putting your money where your mouth is, so to speak. And I mean that in the best possible way. Where you allocate your funds for the betterment of the community speaks volumes as to what your priorities are for the community. So, this is incredibly important exercise for me as I try to help you achieve your goals for the town and advance things as best that we can going forward. It is purposely high level. It is purposely kept to 10, 15, 20 minutes for each item. And really, my goal for today is just to hear your general high-level thoughts about things. I'm trying to decipher what's really important to you all collectively. I don't expect you all to make any binding decisions today. I don't expect me to have all the answers. I don't expect the staff to have all the answers. What I'm trying to do is take your comments today and then meld that together over the next few months into a budget that I hope you'll be pleased with when you see it in May. And then certainly, you all can adjust it in any way that you would like before you adopt it in June. But hopefully, I do a good job listening to you all today. Hopefully, I work well with the staff over the next few months, and we put together something that you all will be pleased with in May. That's my goal going forward. So, with that said, I just wanted to, again, reiterate that I appreciate your time. I know that some of the things maybe require more discussion than the time that we've allotted, and we'll note those during the course of the meeting today. If there are things that we want to have a more in-depth discussion, we will do that, either at an upcoming meeting or as part of the budget process going forward. So, we can go as fast or as slow as you all would like on certain things. And I will follow your cue. I hope that we can stay on reasonably good track and get out of here by around two o'clock or so. But if we're doing really, really well and we're done at one, that's great. If there are items that we're talking about that you want to talk about longer and maybe not talk about something else on there, that's fine, too. So, it really depends on how the conversation goes and what you all want to achieve today. But again, just thank you. I appreciate your time. I realize that, well, I know for a fact I'm still learning all of you, and you're still learning me. So, hopefully, this will give you a better sense of how I operate and what I'm trying to do. So, without any questions about just the goal for today's meeting or the format? Okay. All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, next up, we have Public Comment, I do believe, Ms. Hulse.
Miss Scott, Sandra.
Oh, it's not. She snuck in here. I didn't see her. Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I don't want to delay this meeting, but I have specific comments on Items 7B and C, 16, and 27C and D, among others. And I wonder if it would be more appropriate for me to briefly speak during those times, if that's allowed.
Which areas were you going to speak about?
7B and C, stormwater improvements and Cape Carteret Trail Capital Project. Number 16 is Town Center Concept Future Roads. And 27C and D are Independence Day Fireworks and Boat Ramp Permit Program. So, those, well, it wouldn't take but a sentence at each one if I'm allowed to speak during that discussion. Or if you want me to go through it now, I will.
I think it's ultimately up to you all. From my perspective, I think that would be fine to allow her to speak when we get to the particular items. We had a small group today, so, but it's up to you.
We're small today. I think it would make for us.
I don't have a lot to say. I just have asked in the past for different services. And I think we could use every other month our waste pickup, because my backyard was full of pine cones. And my neighbor said her backyard is full of pine cones. And there are things that could be picked up in February instead of March. And the other thing, one time, and I don't know if it's necessary because so many people have trucks, but a pickup of big items, like people have sofas and, you know, and other items that are large, and they can't get them in the car. And that was all I had to say.
Thank you. All right, financial budget information.
So, under Item Number Six, really just kind of wanted to summarize the key points of our overall financial status for the board. Hopefully, the information that was in the packet for you was helpful. Some of the high points, generally speaking, I think we're in pretty good shape. And that's a credit to the leadership of the town over the last several years for putting us in a reasonably good position going forward. The total fund balance at June 30th of last year is about $2.3 million. That comes out to about 72% of our annual expenditures. I think that's perhaps understated, because that is factoring in all of the money that you all have allocated for pretty significant capital projects, stormwater, bicycle trails, et cetera. I think a more realistic number of the annual recurring expenditures is right up around 120, 121% next year. That's very good. And for a small town like us, commonly, you will see figures that exceed 100%. The town's official policy is 28%, so we're well above that, plus an additional $250,000 for any emergencies that may arise. So, again, I think we're well positioned. The fund balance is particularly helpful in the sense that A, it allows you to meet your cash flow; B, it's there for emergencies; C, it gives you the flexibility to take advantage of any unexpected, unique opportunities that come along that maybe you want to move quickly on; and then D, it certainly contributes to the interest earnings for the town. So, we're in good shape in that sense. I think the town's budget is structurally sound. I don't see any holes in it. I don't see anything that's setting us up for failure in the future. Pretty well put together. Tax rate's $0.21.25. That hasn't changed since 1819. My goal, when you see a budget from me in May, is to either keep that rate the same or even potentially reduce that rate. And we'll talk about that a little bit more going forward. 15 full-time positions, 14 of them are filled. We have a position in Public Works that's not been filled since about August, when an individual left. I think we're doing fine with three people in that department as opposed to four. In terms of debt, we just paid off the only outstanding debt that we had for a police, I'm sorry, for a public works vehicle. We have about $174,000 in outstanding lease obligations through the enterprise program. Those are for police cars that were purchased last fiscal year and then also this current fiscal year. And so, one of the things I'll talk to you about a little bit later is whether or not that's the right approach for us going forward. With that said, there's a summary of things on the spreadsheet in your packet. Just tried to broke down, break down really the key numbers, the things that are really important to me as I try to manage the town's finances in a prudent manner. You've got a history there of the total taxable value. You've got the tax rate history. I put a little summary of the capital project ordinances that we have right now. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. But this is purposely designed so that before we start talking about what you want to do, that you know how much money we've got and where the opportunity is. So, it's all context. Is there anything that you guys have questions about, or? I want to say it's in the $15,000 range, maybe slightly less than that, yeah. I assume that you're talking about the special motor vehicle tax, the $5 charge. Okay. Yeah. All right. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to Number Seven. So, I wanted to give you a picture of where we're at for the current year. And there's a spreadsheet included in your packet for that as well. Generally speaking, I think we're in good shape. I think we're going to end the year in pretty good shape as well. Right now, projecting a balance of about, a surplus of about $244,000 at the end of this year. And I will say that it's purposely conservative, so perhaps we'll do a little bit better than that. And so, the main reasons for that are really salary savings. Because of my situation with California, there are savings in the administration salary budget. We have a vacant position in Public Works. We had vacant positions in the police department earlier this year. Those are some of the key factors contributing to that. Revenues are coming in as expected and a little bit better than expected. I think the sales tax estimate was very conservative, and we've just seen just a really crazy growth in the sales tax revenues, which I don't expect that to continue in the future, but it's good. Take it while you can get it. Property tax is coming in about like we expected, maybe a little bit better than we expected. There was also a total of about $50,000 that were budgeted, that was budgeted for improvements to this building and/or the police department building that I don't expect that we'll use this year as we try to figure out the best strategy going forward for buildings. That contributes to that as well. So, bottom line is, I don't think we see any significant problems or challenges going forward in the current fiscal year. I think we're on track. We're in good shape. I wanted to also let you know about the capital project ordinances that we've set up for stormwater improvements and for the trail. Right now, when you consider the design contracts that the board has approved, when you consider the planned easement acquisition at the Star Hill Golf Course, I think we should have a balance of around $723,000 at June 30th of this year. I think we'll finish the design work for the three locations at Arden Oaks and Sutton Drive and Voggs Sound Drive. We may be into construction by that time, too. So, I've just assumed that we really won't have spent much on construction by that time. But we'll have those design contracts should be basically completed and wrapped up for the most part, and we'll know what we're doing for construction going forward. On the trail, expect to have about $407,000 available at year-end. I'm currently talking with an engineering firm, awaiting a proposal on the design of the remaining roughly one mile of the trail. I did finally track down some survey work that the town had done at some point in the past. So, we've probably got about 2/3 of the survey work that we need for the remainder of the trail along Taylor and Ocean Road and Highway 58. So, integrating all that stuff, waiting on a proposal. I hope that I'll bring you a design contract for the remaining work sometime here in the next month or two, and we'll get that moving along. My goal is to build that this year. We probably won't, hopefully, we'll have a contract awarded by June 30th. I don't, certainly not going to have that done, but hopefully sometime later this summer or this fall. And then we'll close that out. So, for these larger capital projects, I like to use these multi-year capital project accounts. It's just so much easier to keep track of everything and stay on track with what we're doing. So, one thing I wanted to mention about the stormwater improvements. We were fortunate. We were awarded an $85,000 grant through something called the Resilient Coastal Communities Program. That was specifically for design work, and that is funding two of the three contracts that we have in place right now. We also received a $200,000 emergency management grant. That was also for design work. But I've had some good conversations with the staff at the state about converting that to construction funding. And they've basically given me a good feel about that. And so, I expect to send them a letter, literally this week, requesting that those funds be allowed to be used for construction. And some of it's just a matter of managing the different pots of money and meeting the grant deadlines and so forth. But my intention is that hopefully, they will approve using it for construction. It seems very promising right now. And then, those funds have to be expended by December 31st of this year. So, my goal would be to get the design work done for those three locations and then use that $200,000 grant for construction at one or two, maybe three of the locations going forward, depending on how the costs come in. So, at the end game, it just gives the town more flexibility. Still the same amount of money allocated for the stormwater improvements, but should enable us to move a little more efficiently, I think, going forward. So, again, I think we're in good shape. We can have the ability to do some good things with stormwater and with bicycle trail stuff going forward, so.
All right, Ms. Hulse, you have comments?
Thank you, sir. I would earnestly encourage the town to increase the budget for the trail to the extent that you let Frank go for some grants for park. I would very much like to see the town acquire the one-acre-plus property at the intersection of Taylor and Ocean Road and 58. You could have a nice trailhead there for the, for the, for the trail. You could have a bathroom. You could have picnic tables. You could have a parking lot. And you could shorten the trail considerably by allowing people to cut over from Taylor and Ocean Road to 58 at the base of that. In the past, had a four-bedroom set tank permit, so I know that a bathroom is feasible should you decide you want one. Otherwise, it could be just a pavilion, a parking lot, but a way for people to go and park there. And it could be a public park. We've heard presentations about wanting some park for the older children. Maybe, who knows, a basketball court when people aren't using the parking lot, whatever. But the point is, that property is owned in undivided interest by the heirs of the golf course. Four Shackleford daughters and spouses, three Spelheers and spouses, four McLean heirs and spouses. And in order to offer it formally to the town with a fixed price, I have to get a contract signed by each of those people, or else some spouse could say, or some heir could say, "Well, I didn't agree to that," and jerk the rug out from under us even after we've pursued grants and so forth. So, I'm hoping that the town is interested in pursuing that. And if so, I will pursue the heirs. And the other thing is, Lord, I had my notes.
Stormwater?
Yes. I am eager to participate in my position with Star Hill to cooperate with the stormwater improvements. And we'll use every effort to influence that Board of Directors to pursue the cheapest, best solution for Sutton. And you have my promise on that. We've talked to the engineer, I've talked to Frank, and we'll do whatever it takes to help use the money to best advantage on that stormwater. Thank you.
On this property you're talking about at the end of the trail, do you have an estimate about what the price of that would be?
Well, without talking to the heirs, I couldn't really guarantee the price. But I will tell you that the last lot with the Nigiri Trust owns across the street is for sale for $125,000. Lots have been sold at Star Hill for $140,000, just regular residential lots. One half-acre sold for $149,000. And you're up and down, but mostly going up.
Okay. What size is that lot?
It's over an acre. I think it's 1.4.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions about the current year budget projection? Again, I think we're in pretty good shape for this year, so no, no red flags hanging out there. In terms of next year fiscal '23, '24, I can't even believe I'm saying that. We are, I think, in good shape. You have an early projection included in your packet. At this point, business as usual. I'm expecting a surplus of around $26,000 at this time. That is based on year-to-date revenues. That's based on current operating expenditures. That's based on reasonable assumptions about revenues and expenditures going forward. And honestly, I think it's probably, hopefully, too conservative. But I always try to be conservative when we're projecting these things out. So, I hope that by the time we get to you in May, I'll have a rosier picture for you. Obviously, I don't know how things are going to go and what's going to happen with the economy, or Russia, or Ukraine, or what have you. But at this point in time, I think we're, you'll have some flexibility with this year's budget coming up. Some of the, some of the key assumptions that are included in that projection. I've got a 1% growth in the property tax base. I think that's reasonable. That's based on the latest data from Carteret County. We've also had 19 new single-family residential starts this year. So, we should see some growth in the tax base. I assumed a 2% growth in sales tax revenues, and that's on top of extremely conservative revenue estimates for the current fiscal year. For the remainder of this fiscal year, I actually assumed we'd bring in less sales tax revenue this year than we did last year. So, that's hopefully going to be a little bit better for us in the current year. And then I've assumed 2% next year, which is pretty, pretty light. And again, I don't know anything more than you do about where the economy's going, but I think it's a reasonable estimate at this time. Most of the other revenue sources, I've just got plugged in at the same amounts as this year. Maybe a slight increase, slight decrease, based on what we're seeing. Prelimarily, I've plugged in a 3% salary adjustment for all employees, cost of living. I've also factored in a 10% increase in health insurance premiums. And we'll see, we'll get those numbers in April. I'm actually scheduled, Heather and I, to meet with a broker next week to talk about maybe some other alternatives for health insurance.
Is that just absorbed in the expenditures?
It is, yeah. It's spread across the different departments, yeah, for, applied to all the existing salaries. I have included 15 positions in here. And so, there is $50,000 set aside for a position in the planning inspections function. We'll talk a little about that a little bit more later. So, that's in there as well. So, if we do that, we'd have a surplus of $26,000. If we didn't do that, theoretically, we'd have a surplus of probably more like $100,000. So, that'll be a key decision point, I think, for you all as we go forward. Yes?
Talking about the tax and income coming in for buildings and stuff, do you know how much at this point, if you even had the opportunity to check, of how much property, how much is left of Cape Carteret left to be developed?
Yeah, so going off of the data that was...
How much has been developed for as a percentage?
Yeah, so I probably can't do the math that quick in my head anymore. But I think we've got probably about 300 or 400 vacant parcels left. And so, if you're developing new homes, 20, and 20 is a good year, I think. You've got plenty of inventory, so to speak, for the future. So, I think you'll continue to see the tax base grow going forward. So, you're not in any danger of running out of land anytime soon. So, is that the, is that what you were asking?
Yes, absolutely.
There is $54,851 in the projection for lease payments for those six police vehicles that I mentioned to you. And so, that's something that we would budget every year. And we'll talk a little about, a little bit about that as we go forward, too. But those are kind of the key things that are in there. Off to the side, we've got the same money available for stormwater improvements and for bicycle trail improvements that I just shared with you. Just simply stuck that sheet in the packet again, just to basically remind myself to say that. So, I think going forward, we will look at the most recent data in terms of actual revenues received as we go through another two, three, four months of this fiscal year. We'll tweak those revenue estimates, either good or bad. We'll continue to work on maximizing value for the expenditures that we do include in the budget going forward. We'll take your feedback from today and along the way over the next few months, and then come back to you, hopefully, with a very responsible spending plan in May for you to consider. So, bottom line is, I guess, the take-home message is you've got a little bit of flexibility there going forward. Any questions about any of that stuff at this point? Number nine, what I typically do is, as part of the budget and as part of this meeting to sort of kick off the budget, is I will give the, the board a five-year capital replacement and improvement program. And that will include everything from police vehicles to pickup trucks, to stormwater projects, or park improvements, or really whatever else you all would like to do. I did not put that together right now because I need to get a better sense from you all of what you want to see in the future. And so, that's part of what this meeting is for today and as we go forward. But in the future, hopefully, we will have a five-year plan that the board will be asked to consider, adjust, and ultimately adopt. And that'll all be integrated so that we are planning appropriately for the future. And with the cap, the five-year capital plan, my expectation is, is that the board would approve that each year. So, you may approve the five-year plan in June. And next year, you may say, hey, you know what? We've changed our mind. We don't really want to do that project then, or maybe a new need or a new issue arises. And so, that should be tweaked and adjusted every year. And it's not set in stone, but at least it's a guide for you, for me, for the community about what we're thinking of doing. The other thing that I typically... The other thing that I typically do is put together a five-year projection, uh, so that we all have at least a reasonable, um, idea of how the budget looks going forward. My goal is going to be to stabilize your capital expenditures at about the same amount every year, stabilize all of your expenditures at about the same amount every year, and most importantly stabilize your tax rate at about the same rate every year, unless there are very specific things that you all would like to accomplish and that maybe that warrants a tax increase, maybe you want to cut the tax rate. But I just want to have another tool just so that we're all at least aware of what the issues are going forward. Try to keep the budget structurally sound so we don't dig a hole for ourselves or more importantly for our successors, uh, down the road. So that's coming attractions, uh, in the future. We're, uh, we're cruising right along. And, and so under number nine, um, again, it's still the process of me learning you and you learning me. Um, but I really just kind of wanted to provide an opportunity for you all to talk about what you want the town to be. Um, and so I, I basically structured this really as an open-ended conversation. It can go as long or as short as you all would like, but I'm really trying to get a sense from you all, what do you want the town to be in the future? And so I outlined some questions in here that you don't have to go through one by one, but just to kind of get you thinking and help me get a better sense from you. To me, what I'm struggling to figure out is what is the town of Cape Carteret's identity right now? And what do you want that identity to be in the future? And what kinds of things do you want to do to create that identity? What can I help you? What can the staff help you do to achieve that identity? Um, and so that's really kind of what I'm looking for and that's going to inform how we go about things in the future. Um, I think the future's always been bright here. The future's still bright here. The future's probably even brighter here. Um, when Interstate 42 is completed, um, I think you're just going to see it accelerate. Um, and it's been going at a pretty good clip for the last 24 years I've lived in the region. I think it's only going to continue. So you have, uh, I think a unique opportunity for the town of Cape Carteret to craft that and make it what you want it to be. And so it's important that I know what you want it to be. Doesn't matter what Frank wants it to be. It matters what the six of you want it to be and more importantly, what the people of this town want it to be. So what do you want to be? What kind of niche do you want for this area? What kind of, what level of service are you looking to provide? Are you looking to do the bare minimum and keep expenses as low as possible? Are you looking to provide additional services at a higher level? And there's no right or wrong answer to any of this stuff. I just want to get a sense from you so that hopefully when I know what you want, I can help you get there. So I'll shut up and listen to you guys.
I've got a question for you. What, uh, what kind of manpower would it take for us to provide, not gonna say on call, but by appointment services for this yard, free pickup or whatever? I know it's a big, right now it's a muscle movement that we do once, every once in a while. But you have a day, y'all have time during the, once a month, is there a day that y'all have less time? People could call and sign up for a, a yard pickup and you could do it one day or pick up during the day or?
Yeah, yeah, I can read you, man. Manpower is usually, it's, you can do it with one man on a on-call basis because you're only going out and saying a dozen.
Well, I don't want you, I don't want y'all to end up in a place where somebody calls every day and says, well, now you can't do this. But it would be nicer, I think, for most folks. I know I rarely have all my yard trash ready for the days.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
But I just didn't know if that was something that we'd like to consider doing or if it was feasible to do.
Right. It is, though. It is. The only biggest struggle right now is, which I have, there's the three of us on staff. I'm the only one that currently holds a CDO license to operate the truck. So we can only operate it, be driving it. We're in the process of getting into others on staff to move forward, try to pursue a CDO license. So all of us can be licensed to do it, try to do something if somebody's out or said. But, um, that's the biggest challenge right now is to get everybody on board to pursue a CDO license to be able to drive the truck.
I think that's an easy way for to, to increase the level of service that we provide to the town and it's not going to cost us. I mean, does that sound like it's going to cost us anything extra than a little bit of training for some parts or extra?
Yeah. I, I think theoretically it would be the same volume of work, uh, with, uh, on-call service as it is now with the four times per year theoretically. Now, I think there's probably the potential for the volume to increase somewhat because people will know that it's on-demand and maybe they're going to do, maybe they're going to be more aggressive and do the work a little more often. But I think we can accommodate that change and that would be a nice, um, expansion of the service level for people, for you guys to consider. But Ryan and I have talked about that a lot. I think we could make that work with the current staffing.
Yeah. I think that, like I said, I think you could reduce your burden once a month. I have to get on, get on the schedule for that pickup.
Would we still offer it at the, the normal rates, like the four times a year? Or are you saying shift from that to the old man?
That seems like a-
Well, it's-
You could probably do both, I'm thinking, but your pickups would be less during that rotation.
That's what I was thinking too.
Because you are doing it sort of as you go, I would think.
Do both that way. Yeah. I think when you did come through that scheduled time, it would be less because somebody had already had their stuff ready. So then we've already called.
Yeah. I don't think you would necessarily need to get it on a monthly, get a, but it doesn't matter to me how that works out. It just, that would be a nice increase in service that is not really going to cost us much and would be beneficial, I think, most people.
Yeah.
I just want to ask Ryan something. Ryan, since you have been picking up the debris, each time you've gone out, have you seen you picking up less or it's about the same?
It's roughly about the same. It depends what time of the year it is though. For example, but now, uh, instead of having limbs and stuff, it takes two arm brads, but if somebody has a pile of leaves, it's not just a pickup truck. You're using 12, 15 arm brads and you're out on that site more. So it's just time, the different time of year that it is. It's all our time it takes to do it. So, um, I think we have some information, I think we're going to get to it later in the afternoon, some facts from previous pickups. But, um, it's just about what type of debris is out and how many locations. And it's roughly around the same.
What about the, uh?
It tends to be more than spring and fall.
Right, right. So, uh, how many days does it take you to normally pick up during your each one?
About six, four days.
Six days?
Yeah.
For that period?
It could be anywhere from, there's time for us taking us. We had to run and do other certain tasks and stuff like that, but you're, I bet out of it, it's around six to eight days.
I, I think if we did do something like that, we'd probably just communicate to the public that, you know, if you call and get on the list, uh, our goal is going to be to pick it up from the front of your house within a week, maybe two weeks. I mean, we would probably communicate that goal and then just allocate one day a week to send them there to pick it up or something like that.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, there's, I don't care how you just get that cat, but there's, you can limit the list to however many you can pick up in a day.
Sure.
If you're providing it every month or whatever it is.
I think that would be better overall for citizens as long as it doesn't dramatically increase the workload. You said about six days now, so you're talking about 24 days a year and spending as fast as right now. As long as, you know, it doesn't increase that where other things are, then it would work better for citizens rather than having to wait for three months or two months, you know?
Yeah. One, one of the comments that we've heard that makes total sense is if, if we don't go to some sort of on-demand service, we probably just need to publicize the dates at the beginning of the year so people can plan accordingly, whether it's once a quarter or once every other month or whatever the case may be. So, so people can plan. But I, I, I think that is something we could certainly do fairly economically and, and if it becomes too much of a burden, then we can certainly adjust if need be.
I think while we're talking about, like I say, a five-year plan, especially with purchases and equipment, uh, that's something I'd like to know is you made a statement about that the leaves were pretty much the most time consuming.
Right.
Would it be advantageous to get a vacuum type setup, you know, whether we buy ourselves or look into sharing with the other towns or whatever's the best way to go, but that be something we want to look into in the future?
We have a smaller, we have one. We do. We have a smaller type vacuum in the shop that we use for side scrapes and ditches.
Okay.
But we currently do have one, or whatever you can look at that.
Are you using it to, uh, more volume? Is that a, what size is it?
It's like a building good. I don't know exactly what size of this, but it's something you totally might, uh, 350 and kind of make a little canopy. And, um, usually we do dishes with it. Great examples out there on like Holly Lane and Big Street and, um, any dishes, um, go out there and scoop up some leaves, but.
I think, um, after hearing all this, I mean, I'm going to be in the minority here. I think that we need to pay attention to what happened in Emerald Isle. They started out with that program. Now you see two trucks all day long, up and down. I don't want me to lose it all, but the Public Works Director told me when I was over there brokering a deal for the Emerald Isle pickup iron debris during your vacancy to California. He made the comment to me, it's the worst mistake here for you. So I think we need to really think about that. The mobilization, just to go out and pick up a handful of loads and I don't know, I, I, I just think it needs some more discussion.
Oh, I'm sure. I mean, I, I tend to agree, but we, I think that we can put limits to prevent that from becoming, I don't want, I, to be clear, I'm not advocating for an on-call.
That's what they have over there. So that's it.
I'm not advocating for them, anybody being able to call and be like, hey, come get my leaves tomorrow. I'm just saying that we could increase our, the flexibility for the citizens by having a system, a set system where, you know, maybe once a month or whenever they can go do that. And if you miss that, then that's just too bad.
I personally think it'd be easier just to increase the number of pickups we have that call here with license, like every other month or so, uh, would be, that's just my opinion.
At the end of the day.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah. I, I get that. At the end of the day, I'm just generally talking about a way to increase the services. For the next five years, if we can find the low hanging fruit wherever we provide services and they don't really cost us that much, but provides, you know, benefits to the town, then that's kind of something we should do.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree with the manpower issue though with, with, you know, to be on call, pick up anytime, be on call, mobilization, whatnot, take away from their daily duties. I just think it needs a lot more discussion.
Yeah. A couple of-
A dollar figure.
Yeah.
Right.
So a couple of thoughts. I mean, yeah. Couple of, I mean, one is I, I don't think we would, in my mind at least, we would not just stop what we were doing and run out and pick it up. But maybe if the person called up on a Monday, we may say our goal is to get out there and pick you up by next Monday or next Wednesday or whatever. And then let Ryan accumulate a list of 10, 12, whatever number of places and go out all at one time and maybe allocate a half a day or a full day or something to do it like that. So that would be the way I would envision it. I would not send the truck out every single day to pick it up the next day. Um, secondly, the thing about Emerald Isle is that it's actually not a call-in on-demand system. The demand got so strong that they just make continuous passes through the town. They drive that truck around town continuously and people just know, two trucks. Yeah, that's right. And it, and it grew actually, um, from something like you have now. Um, it actually grew from less frequent collection to something like you have now, to, uh, calling up, getting on the list. And then it grew to, well, gosh, there's so many people on the list, we'll just drive the truck around all day long. And then it grew to two trucks. So the one thing I would say to you is that, um, it may be an additional program to manage for the Public Works Director, but incredibly well-received by the customers, by the residents in that community. And I expect folks here would appreciate that as well. So, but ultimately you guys got to balance those things. All great thoughts and comments and we got to find, I guess, the sweet spot for that going forward.
Something maybe we could look at as a test run for one year and then address it in the coming up next year, see how it worked out. But wasn't there also someone brought up about, oh, yeah, this doc brought up about white goods and those kind of things? I don't know. I, I know that's, that's a whole nother ballgame, but I think what they have like in Emerald Isle was they just had a drop-off, correct? Were they, or did they actually pick it up too?
Yeah. So I don't know what they're doing now, but up till four years ago, they basically had an on-demand call-in service for white goods. And then I think the, the frequency was so limited that we might've picked them up once a month, um, and told people, okay, we'll be there on Friday, the second Friday or whatever the case may be. So. And, and I think certainly we could come up with something like that. Honestly, that was a very easy service to provide. There's also some minor revenues associated with recycling the materials, but, uh, that's probably pretty easy to do. And I would suggest maybe starting small, maybe offer it once a year initially and see how that goes and then you can adjust from there if that's something you want to do.
And there, there's got to be a charge for us to drop this.
I could sell it. I believe they're selling it now.
Yeah. I, I think, I think in both of these examples, probably the biggest cost impact is just going to be the wear and tear on that vehicle, which is an expensive vehicle. It's probably a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar vehicle, give or take. So that's the biggest consideration probably, uh, in my view.
Right. I want to start back with the, uh, identity issue for the town. A couple of quick comments here. One of your questions is what, what is the town of Cape Carteret? I'm dead you right now. It's been my experience since my involvement with the town and living here that Cape Carteret has always struggled with their own identity. Okay. Proximity to Emerald Isle is the destination. You could say we're a bedroom community, a corridor town, what have you. I, I think, in, in my opinion, we'll always be a bedroom community. I think the last time I checked we're like 35% of senior citizens, if you will, over 55. I personally would like to see enhancements on our parks and, uh, sidewalks and things of that nature that benefit everyone, all age groups. Uh, and concentrate, you know, all I hear is business, let's draw business, 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 business. It's going to come whenever this lady over here decides and her family decides what they want to do with their property. Until then, let's concentrate on what we can do, not worry about what Ms. Holson and her family's going to do. That's just my opinion. It's been that way for six years since I've been on this board. As far as I weigh, about 42, the impact, I personally don't see that much impact on 42 happening. I think our impact's going to be on 58. Uh, county commissioners did us no favor last month, uh, resolving for our big war. That's something that we got to pay attention to was coming down 58.
And that's what I mean. I think 42 is just going to funnel them here and then they're going to- I, I agree with what you're saying. I just want to clarify, like 42 in general is just going to make it that much easier and quicker for people to get everywhere down here.
Another thing, we're, we're comprised of 15% veterans here in town. Last immigrant chart on the town. I don't know. I think we do a pretty good job of acknowledging our veterans with a flag program and whatnot. You have here, should we, uh, strive to provide more services or only essential services in most cost-effective manner? I think we currently are providing more than essential services. Uh, I'm, I'm really happy with the services we provide with the budget we have worked with. I think the, the towns came a long way in the last, uh, six years, big time. That's evident by the budget. Then you have here, lastly, you have here, uh, should we expand partnerships with other adjacent communities? And I've got a big, uh, exclamation mark. I've always been one of the people on this board that, that wants our town to be self-sufficient, self-sufficient, if you will, um, not after a lot of, um, towns to, 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 to join efforts. It was kind of humbling when I had to go to Emerald Isle and beg them to pick up lethal limb. Uh, I don't want to do that again and thank goodness for the problem, I won't ever have to do that again. Uh, we are a sovereign town. I like to take care of our own people. Uh, I just see the future of our town as being more family-oriented bedroom community. And that's all I have to say.
I agree with that. I think that we should always strive to be self-sufficient. And I'm not saying that we- And I'm not saying that we shouldn't ever collaborate with our, you know, neighbors. We have a duty to the citizens of the town to make sure that we can stand on our own. I just think that's important to keep in mind.
Very good.
I'm gonna go ahead and say that I, I, I actually agree with Commissioner Martin saying, um, the, I, I think it is a good point to say that we can improve on what we have, the parks, the sidewalks, the, the things that we have that, that are already in place. You know, I've got, I live in Star Hill North and, um, you know, some of the sidewalks are not very accessible for handicap. And so I think something could be done there. Um, you know, most of the kids, they get along just fine. The parks, uh, yeah, that's a big thing for me. Um, you know, with as many parks as we have, it'd be great. I, I like Paxton's idea there with, uh, I know that was discussed at the last planning board meeting. I do like that idea. Um, I like it being a, a, a park or a trailhead, something like that for the, the trail. I, I thought that was a, a very good idea. And so, yes, I, I agree that we do provide a lot of services and I think we do that very well. And we were just talking about how to, you know, how can we improve that? How can we make that better? We did sort of the same conversation with the, the boat ramp. We sort of went out on a limb and increased the prices, see if it could just get better for the citizens. And so I like that. I like that type of discussion with, with us. Um, so I, I do agree with that. To, to what extent do we work with other towns? I don't know. I don't know what that, what that means. I, I mean, I, I think to some extent we're all kind of small. And so there could be some sharing of assets or, you know, certain things that could be done. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know what we need, you know, vacuum wise or whatever. But maybe something could be done, but, uh, that's kind of how I, um, that's kind of how I feel about it. I think that's, our, our, our identity is that small, small town and, you know. I hear a lot of people say that. I mean, I'm saying it now.
I think that we need to be self-sufficient, take care of our own town, our own citizens. At the same time, I don't think we need to close the doors on ever going into discussion with anybody else on possibly benefits. And we can put a wall up around ourselves and we're not talking anybody else. We're doing it all our own. As long as we can do it on our own, that's great. I just don't think we should close the door to ever having discussions with another town possibly benefiting benefits. Camera brought up again the, back with the trail. I would, and I know that's not just what we're talking about now, but I would all be in favor of at least pursuing the opportunity to get that property or park. Because I think in the long run, we might find out that cost-wise, it would, I could be close to just as cheap to buy a property and cut the trail shorter as to have to build the trail around it with the cost of, uh, what we paid for foot, for the, the trail out there now. I think it's something to take a look at, definitely consider. Cape Cod red has always maintained the identity of a bedroom community. And I like to pers- continue to pursue that. But, I mean, face of reality, times are changing. It is growing. It's not the bedroom community of what is now when I moved here. I mean, the town has already grown tremendously. The, uh, geographics of the town have changed. When I, I think Steve said around thirty-five percent, thirty, thirty-five percent of elderly people, retired people now, it was much more than that in nineteen ninety-five when I moved here. But over time, a lot of military people have started coming in, Star Hill North has come up. There's, that's changing. And with everything that's getting ready to happen here in Pelletier over the next couple of years, plus with the forty-two, it's, it's going to change. People are coming. They're, they're going to be coming from both directions and, uh, I forgot what you said the number was, how many parcels we still had vacant in town. But all you got to do is drive from here to my house right now. And you see, that's changing every day. I mean, every day I drive down Star Hill, I see another lot being cleared out. Houses, the houses are coming and they're coming up and like people are going to continue to build here. I think we need to strive to maintain the identity that we have of bedroom community. But at the same time, we've got to prepare for what's coming. I mean, there, there are more people coming. Geographics of the town are going to change over the next few years too.
Yeah, I think we've got a little less than four hundred lots, give or take. And that doesn't include any other parcels that might be divided in the future, so. Yeah, yes, for the most part.
When people ask me about Cape Cod red, I always tell them, I say, well, we're Mayberry, but we got a big intersection. And that's the difference. It was the fictitious town of Mayberry. The population there was around twenty-four hundred people, which is what we, we're a small town. But I agree with everything you guys are saying that we need to contain ourselves. And I think we're seeing a transition to where we've been from, like Steve says, he had to go ask for help during, now people are actually coming to us for him. And we have to be very careful about that. And I think it's always good to have these conversations with our neighbors. You know, we're being affected by them, whether we like it or not. We're seeing that with our police, that now they're being asked to go out and not here again, I want to help our neighbors as much as possible. But, you know, they're not paying our taxes. They're not putting money into our police department. And I have a problem with that. So if we can help them help themselves, I'm all for that. But, you know, I, I'll have conversations about anything, but when it comes down to it, I think you all know, I'm, I'm for our town number one. We look out for these citizens who are paying these bills and looking for these services and our, that's our jobs to make sure that we keep this, you know, contained and we're looking after that. Because, you know, most of us, like myself, when I'm retired, I don't have raises every year. I don't have the ability to go there and go out and perform and to make more money. So the less, the less money I give the taxes to vote, I think ninety-nine point nine percent of everybody in this town feels the same way about that, so.
Very good.
I know a lot, a lot of you already spoke. And a lot of you know this, some of you may or may not, but a lot of you know I was born raising Cape Cod red. And I have seen, seen a lot of changes, have good facts. My mom and daddy bought their house in nineteen sixty-three over in Needham Ford Drive. That's where I was raised. And I remember back when we were growing up, uh, what, what elementary was first grade through eighth grade, there was no such thing as kindergarten. And, um, after school, going down the street, a one-man police department would come down the road and he was, watched all of us boys in the neighborhood playing football at somebody's house. And everybody knew everybody. The triangle between Taylor Notion, us and Highway Fifty-Eight was nothing but all woods, other than my grand uncle's house, Uncle Seaton, and Hunter Brown Road. That was the only people on Taylor Notion, other than the Star Hill golf course. So there has been a lot of growth, but I would tell you, it has always been, I would say, Ms. Paxton, please chime in if you like to. A quaint community with a big heart. The, the neighbors took care of the neighbors. They were brothered out for each other. And it was a great place to live and raise your child. We had good school. We had good services at the time. But God, keep in mind, there's only like two, three hundred people in Cape Cod red. But that has changed tremendously. Um, and it's going to continue to change. I see it. I know it. And, and I have, I read this, honestly, this last night, I read this last night, Frank, that you wrote. And it made me do a lot of thinking from where Cape Cod was back then and where are we heading now? And I'm like, wow, that's a lot to think about. And it's our responsibility and our, to make sure to redirect this town and community in the direction that's going to be best for all. Not only for just the citizens, but we got to think about our businesses as well. I mean, they're important. I'm not saying make a big old mall off the street, but we need to make sure that we maintain the right course of action for these businesses as well, along with the citizens that are still moving in here. Don, you're actually right. I wrote through here, I went through all Cape Cod red, all Basial Park, all of Star Hill. And I'm like, wow, look at the houses that are going up. I'm like, with the cost of building materials, which you know what that is. I'm like, wow, how do people really afford it? But a lot of them, we used to turn our TV on and we find out that a lot of people are more than moving down here because it's a better place to live and raise your child. So going back to what I'm beginning to say, it was a lot of kids growing up in Lockwood. We had a lot of military at that time living in Cape Cod red. Well, a lot of those military folks didn't move away. They stayed. And then it became more of a retirement community for Cape Cod red. That's basically what we ended up being for a while. Our retirement community was Cape Cod red. Look at Basial Park. Look at Old Star Hill and even, uh, Old Cape Cod red as well. But with things changing, we're going back to the kids going into the streets. I got a phone call from a resident and I told somebody, I said, Ms. Mary, you're going to have to call the police. They're going to have to handle that for you. But she said, there's kids all over the road I can't get to because of all the kids. And I started smiling with it. That's how it was back in the day when I was growing up. Heck, we used to get on a bicycle and run down behind a scooter truck and then fall. What was that like, Dave?
It explains a lot.
Today happens, okay? We all laugh at that, huh? But hey, isn't it great to know that we are moving in a direction back where we have kids back on the streets and playing? At least we know where they are and what they're doing. And so I'm excited to know the direction that we're trying to go towards. And I believe we have six people sitting at these tables right now with the great town manager that at this state could ever have. You can pay me later. But I'm telling you, we have, we have what is going on for this town to make it even a better town for our citizens, for our kids, for our business community. And I agree with what you said, Tom. I mean, moving forward, that's what we need to do. And, and, and Mr. Mayor, with the stuff about our neighboring community as well, yes, I don't see no wall going up around Cape Cod red. If we're going to be that quaint community with the heart, it's always to help others in need. Because I know if we were in need, just like Emerald Isle did, they came and helped us. And we should have the same attitude and the same mindset to help them as well. Not just them, Emerald Isle got the money, they don't need no help. But you know what I'm talking about? If it's Bog, if it's City Point, Pelletier, whomever. But I would tell you, we already locked around us already. Once our four hundred homesites basically are built, we're done. So we got to make sure we have to be like in going in the direction of maintaining that we do it in the correct way, which benefits all for the betterment of all of our community in, uh, in town of Cape Cod red. And that's all I got to say. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Things that's made around here. I think we've been pretty good neighbors to our, uh, towns over here. My biggest problem is, is what Mayor Baker alluded to, is they're enjoying a lower tax rate next door over here than we are. I just don't want us to get involved in, in, in bringing up a discussion that was brought up years ago about sharing a PD. But we're fully vested in, our citizens are fully invested in our PD. We love our PD. It's our PD. And that, that is what I was alluding to. But we, we're big good neighbors. So is Emerald Isle. We've all been good neighbors. I'm not saying for a while we're out of place. But I want to make sure that it's clear. Also, you talk about a great place it was growing up. I, I've been around, said before often, but when I was in the Marines there, Camp of June, you couldn't wait to get out of here when you got discharged. I'm a North Carolina born and bred guy, but there was nothing here that appealed to a twenty-year-old Marine. But what you said is right. The growth and it's attractive now. It attracts the people. Once they get out, they're going to stay. And I'm seeing it more and more and more. It's a great place to retire. It's got all of, uh, everything you need here. Recreational opportunity. I just think, you know, like everybody said, we need to just take care of what we got and expand from there. If, after, ever after, hopefully. I know I'm only live to see today, but I'll be glad when all of those four hundred lots have houses sitting on, built out. And from year to year, we know what the budget's going to be.
But I, I'm going to add something what you just said, Steve. You know, we're, we're, we're going into the area now of, and I know Ms. Paxton, her family has a lot of the property under in the Triangle area and they have their, my, I'm sure you have ideas and what y'all want to do eventually, something down there. But whatever we do, I would like to have more like a, like a, this is just my thought now. If we're going to have a business community, I'd like to have more of a quaint, well, you used that word a lot, where it's more like a village setup. Where we have small streets with nice lighting, a lot of vegetation on the streets, something that's really welcoming to people visiting and people that are living here. To where they walk down the street and actually feel safe, the street that they're walking down.
I think Frank kind of mentioned something in one of his, uh, statements about, uh, potentially joining with DOT to see if that could enhance the aesthetics of twenty-horse.
And they can.
Plantings, uh, street lights, uh, never stop lights and whatnot. I totally agree with that. Just the little things. Then DOT is not a little. So things like that that we can private control. And, uh, like I said earlier, when, when Ms. Holson decides she wants to develop her property, that's all right. And, and, you know, all for capitalism, but, uh, one thing, I don't know if it's appropriate time to, 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 to bring this up, but you're asking what we think about our identity. And I think Don and a couple more mentioned obtaining the Triangle law there. Ms. Holson, I, I totally agree with that. I think it's a great idea. I want to throw one more at you. I would like to, at some point in time for the town to give the Swaim family, uh, Mr. David Swaim and his son, and try to purchase that eight acres behind them. Just to have for the future of this town. I think we're going to see a time when we wish we had that property. If it's for nothing but a park, future town hall, whatever, uh, once it's gone, it's gone. I think that's something we, we, we should look into.
And that's behind the shopping center?
There's eight acres, I think. Uh, I don't know. I think Mr. Swaim would probably be more inclined to sell this property than Ms. Holson would at this time. And I'm not pesterin'. Paxton knows how I feel. We've talked about this many, many times. But hey, I, I think it would, it would benefit us if going forward with this Main Street concept, I think the town needs to own some property over there. That would probably be a big, uh, big issue for me to start that process, honestly.
So, so kind of along the same lines as that, just in general, is it, should the town be thinking about strategic acquisition of properties like that in some other places too, to?
Yes. Okay. Spoke to, I know we all may have heard me, I don't know if I spoke to you. It's the, uh, it may be an acre and a half at this point. Mine's four, four seventy. I think future growth, we need to see if we can obtain that. I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think, uh, John, I want to say, John, I think we looked at that years ago. But now's the time. If we sit and don't do those things, we're going to be, where we at? We got a, we got a building here, you know, we could have done this. Those guys could have done that. We got the magic man sitting on the end down here. You can make it happen, so.
Well, as a caveat to what he was saying, especially with the streets, so just a reminder, but DOT is going to have their presentation over Western Park tomorrow at five thirty. Well, it's not a presentation, but they'll have everything out there to show their vision for this area. Some of y'all have been on board and saw the presentation you had three years ago. It's almost four years ago. And we, we need to be very careful to say on top of that, because one of those plans was to create a big clover leaf, which would take out this building. He was going to take out McDonald's, Hardee's and all the way up to, it was bizarre. With the, and pretty much what they're doing is creating a parking lot for the aisle. But because of the weekend, during season, because we have a little bit of traffic, but, you know. And here again, we need, you know, I encourage all you to go over tomorrow and take a look at it and see if anything's changed or if that's still what they're looking at conceptual wise.
I remember about twelve or fifteen years ago when I was chief here and I was talking to David Reed, who at that time was working here for the town. And we were talking about the corners down here and I, and I just made the comment, you know, somebody like a Crapper Barrel or something set up, how much they would make there. And I remember him telling me then that that'll never happen because DOT is not going to sell that property. He said, because there, I think he said their twenty-five or it might've been fifty-year plan was to eventually have a clover leaf.
For sure.
I still remember that.
The original plan was for clo- clover leaf.
I'm so glad the previous board had the courage to stand up to that and knock that down. Remember that very well, Super Street issue and clover relief. Will's right, we need to monitor that and make sure they don't slip something in on.
Those ideas never go away with DOT. They all, they, they just get put in a cylinder and it keep coming up every few years.
I don't know, I'm certainly not qualified to lead any kind of discussion on that. So I'm hoping maybe, maybe Will will go over there tomorrow and say, uh.
Well, I will be there, sir. Absolutely.
So this, this is great. Like I, I appreciate this and I know you guys have shared individually some of these thoughts with me. I've sort of heard bits and pieces in individual conversations or in different meetings. But just to hear y'all have this conversation as a group is very helpful to me. So thank you.
I love that little saying though, the quaint community with the big order, like their logo or something like that.
I do wanna go back to one thing Commissioner Martin said, and, and I agree with him too on, like now's the time to be looking at this property. There's no better time than right now. And, and if, you know, I-42 comes in and it does bring a lot of, of people here by having that now, at least as a town assessed it, you know, I, I think is gonna really put us in a position to, you know, if we wanna park or whatever, and it's just gonna really put us in a better position. So I, I do agree with that, whether, you know, you know, the eight acres, the 1.5 acres, you know. I think it's good to assess that kind of right now.
Well, that finishes all the property value in Carter County.
Yeah.
At a minimum, we could be the ones that decided what happened on that property in the future, whether it's something we decide to put there or decide to sell it to some business that we wanted to have.
That's exactly right.
And why I have a Main Street concept, if you don't have your skin in the game.
That's exactly right.
So I mean, that's a, it's a permanent.
Well, I had a man tell me years ago, he said, if you want, you want to make your money worth something, invest in real property. No doubt.
Honestly, I, I'm not sure when the full completion scheduled for, but it, it's coming.
And if DOT needs a weird project, they can give us an underpass or overpass so we can. Or not get it across the middle aisle, middle aisle bridge is what we need to get through.
Yeah, you know, I, I think to a certain extent, so I'm sure you guys have driven on 70 in the not-too-distant past, but, but that section basically between about I-95 to Goldsboro, um, a lot of it's already in place, right? So it's a lot quicker now to come down 70, get on 17 there outside of New Bern and shoot on down 58 and stuff. So some of it's already here and gonna be happening, but the quicker it is for people from Raleigh and the Triangle to get here, it, it's all coming. I mean, you can look at Brunswick County and Pender County and Hanover County. And I think 15, 20 years from now, that's what this area is gonna look like.
And I think the county's kind of turned their attention to the down east, specifically because of the Raleigh Navy. They will be coming down and buying the water, the properties at Atlantic Seale or whatever. I think their county's economic eyes are that side. They, they have abandoned us over here, guys. I, it's, it's, it's not good. And I hate, I'm not trying to be political, but. I do tend, I tend to.
All right, well, very helpful. I've got lots of good notes here from the comments. And so one of the things I'll do is after today, maybe even later tonight or tomorrow, I'll send you all kind of my summary of the board's conversation today. And, and you can tell me whether I hit the nail on the head or got something a little bit wrong, but extremely helpful to hear that. So thank you and gives me a good sense going forward. I wanted to just take an opportunity since the stormwater improvements and the bicycle trail are currently underway. Occupying a lot of time is gonna be a significant part of our work plan over the course of the next year, year and a half or so. I kind of wanted to just update you on where we're at with everything right now. And so let me pull up a couple of. Start with Sutton Drive. And as you all know, you awarded a design contract to Tidewater Associates a few months ago. Been working very closely with Jonathan McDaniel, the engineer for that firm. Also working closely with Ms. Holtz and the golf course representatives, trying to find the most cost-effective solution in that area. And so what you see on the screen right now is actually our third attempt at trying to find a cost-effective solution for that area. So initially, we talked about coming up with a, a project that would essentially increase the size of all those pipes from Sutton Drive through the homes, across the fairway, across Star Hill Drive and out to Pettiford Creek. We were basically gonna increase the size of the pipes from roughly 15 inches to 24 or 30 inches. And so, sounds good, would have been a good plan until the cost estimate came back in the $275,000 range. And I didn't think that was the best bang for the buck. So we took another, another look at it and we came up with a, a concept where we would essentially build a new pond in, on the side of the fairway in the golf course. And we thought that was gonna be more economical. Turned out it wasn't, turned out it cost more. It was about $295,000-ish at that point. So then we took a look at what else can we do to affect the desired improvements in this area? And this is what we're focusing on right now. If you see the yellow area in the middle of the fairway, we're essentially looking at regrading the fairway in that area. There's an existing pipe that runs under the fairway there. We would essentially create a very broad swale that would be just above the pipe that's underground. And would really be an overflow, emergency overflow through that area. And purposely set the elevation of that swale at about the same elevation as the existing golf cart path in there. So that when the water does pile up and can't get through the pipe, it just rises up, it'll flow right across the golf course. Ryan's crews opened new grates on the Star Hill Drive side of the fairway a couple of months ago. And so theoretically, the water would never back up like you've experienced it on a couple of the more significant recent rainfall events. I'm waiting on a cost estimate for this right now, but we think it's gonna be significantly less than the numbers I just put out to you. And again, trying to just maximize the value for the entire community for that money, that $700 and some thousand dollars that you have available now. So that's what we're headed toward. You can see the orange lines, those are an existing ditch that we don't currently have easements for. That we'd be working to get easements for that ditch and improve the ditch, just make sure it flows a little better. There's also an existing easement where there's no ditch at the end of the cul-de-sac on Sutton Drive. So take advantage of that, try to tidy that up at the same time. And then the red line is the existing pipe and potentially go in and just increase the size of that pipe from Sutton Drive out to the fairway. That's probably gonna be a key decision point based on the cost estimates that we get. At a minimum, we need to increase the size of the pipe that's underneath of Sutton Drive. It's a very small pipe, should be relatively inexpensive for us to do. So that's kind of where we're at with it right now. I really just kind of wanted to give you a sense of what we're working on. Obviously, we'll come back to you with a final design and go out for construction bids and so forth. And I hope that we'll be able to go to construction later this spring, certainly by the summer at the latest.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Once you go through the fairway, just with the swell heading toward the house, which goes, then it goes underneath Star Hill Drive into the creek. Would that be, would that area suffice to allow that amount of water to go through there without flooding any of those homes?
Yeah, we, we think so. We, we've opened up a couple of catch basins there that were previously just concrete lids on the existing pipe network there. And so Ryan's guys did that a few months ago. That in and of itself, I think is a nice improvement, but it, it's really not that complex of a problem. It's really just there's a bump in the fairway and the water can't get through there. And so when we look at the elevations of the homes that were affected in the previous events, we think we can basically set that emergency swale lower than where the homes are and get the water out of there, so.
So you're lowering your scope to concentrate on eliminating flooding issues of nature.
Correct.
Down to San Agul, fixes problem, totally, no flooding ever. Sounds to me like we're back to where we started with the swell and fairway. Uh, which is good, I'm all for it. Anything, anything we can do to help those people over there? Where is our easement we just purchased for $68,000 at that time?
Yeah, so i- it's undefined at this point. The, the agreement, the resolution that the board approved back in September, it basically outlined the swath generally where the yellow block is. It's actually a wider swath there that the actual easement location would be finalized once we get the design done. So it's in that general area and then once we complete the design, we will move forward with the easement and record it and so forth. So generally in that area and been working closely with Mrs. Holtz and the golf course, really appreciate their cooperation on this. I think we've had some good, uh, good conversations and I think really a desire to work together and find the, the most cost-effective solution.
So the orange is new pipe and then red is pipe improvements?
The orange is ditch improvements and the red is potentially larger sized pipes.
And that's, I think, the difference from where we were. Because if you go out there when it rains, the, the golf course is not really 100% of the problem. It's the red line, it's, yeah, so. I think with that, it's gonna be able to get it to that, that swale sooner and faster and help, even with the, just a, a small amount of rain, not necessarily a flooding event type thing, so.
So that's where we're heading and so preview for you, coming attractions. On Arden Oaks, you've seen this graphic before, but essentially, you basically have a bathtub at the entrance to Arden Oaks and you've got no drain for it. Um, I know when, when the previous significant flooding occurred, the town brought in portable pumps and pumped that water out of there. And I think onto the, the large parcel, basically about where the arrow is right now for the cursor. I went out, I talked with the board a month or two ago and we talked about maybe trying to elevate the road in that area and create some other infiltration areas. If we raise, that's a great thought. If we raise the road there, it's basically gonna dump water right into the second home on the left's garage. And I don't think we wanna get into that situation. So what I'm working on right now, also with Mrs. Holtz, who is the owner of the two large parcels where the cursor is. Working on a plan to try to acquire easements, to put in either a ditch or a pipe that would essentially flow by gravity from the entrance to Arden Oaks and into the creek, Rocky Run, which is the property between those two parcels there. And so we are working through the classification of the stream right now. And gonna try to get someone from the state out here to classify the stream for us, maybe hire an engineering firm or a scientist to help us with that. And that's kind of where we're headed right now. Um, I'm hoping that we can come up with a solution that will be permitted by the environmental agencies, that will be acceptable to Mrs. Holtz. And hopefully, in my mind, this thing would only be used probably once every couple of years, five years, 10 years. I mean, I think it really depends how frequent we have those kind of events, which thankfully, they're not that frequent. So it's really, the design that we're pursuing is more of like an emergency relief valve thing more than anything else. And so much to the point that if we proceed with this, the design will probably include a valve or a dam of some sort that we wouldn't let the water flow through there during normal times. It would only be in these emergency type situations. And so again, the trick is, is to find the most cost-effective way to do that, cause it only happens every couple of years, five years, what have you. So little more, um, we've got, we're a little further along on Sutton Drive, I think, right now. We've got a lot more work to do on this particular location, so, but that's kind of where we're heading at the moment. Short of something like that, I honestly don't know what else we could do, other than bring in portable pumps and route that water somewhere in the future. But in a perfect world, you want it to flow via gravity, it's easy to maintain, there's nothing, less things can go wrong in that situation. So that's kind of where we're at with that. And then last one is Oakstown Drive. You've seen this graphic before. Also, the engineering firm was in town a couple of weeks ago and got a good lay of the land. I think is starting to develop their ideas on how to improve things at this location. Talked to some of the property owners out there, really looking at ways just to get the water from the low spots in the road down to the creek or the canal, I should say, generally in this location right here. And so wanna do that in the most environmentally friendly manner. Uh, wanna make sure that we're not dumping any more sediment into that area. And really trying hard to stay all completely within public street right of ways and the existing ditch network there. So they're off to a good start. That's the one that's probably least developed at this point in time. But those are the things that we'll be working on in the coming months and certainly gonna occupy a lot of our bandwidths in next fiscal year. I mentioned the Emergency Management Disaster Relief and Mitigation Grant. I feel, I'm really optimistic they'll let us convert that to construction. So hopefully that's gonna pay for the improvements that we just talked about here on the screen. Also, another graphic that you've seen, obviously there's the parcel we've been talking about at the point of the triangle on Taylor Notion and Highway 58. Bicycle path, as I mentioned, I'm waiting on a proposal from an engineering firm that I should have here any day now. Was able to secure the topographic surveys for a, a large portion of the area in blue. That's what we have left in blue. It's either a one mile or 1.2, depending on whether we clip the corner up at the point of the triangle. My goal is to bring you a, a design contract for that, either in February or March. And my goal is to bring you a construction contract really as soon as we can thereafter. Hopefully by the end of the fiscal year, if not, then certainly soon after that. But I think we're in good shape. I would like to see the town acquire the parcel that we were talking about up in this area. You can see it does cut the, the distance by about two tenths of a mile. And I think that we've got with the 407,000 that's available, I think that we have enough funding to complete the path. It's probably gonna be close. You all authorized the $100,000 grant application that's due on February 17th. That should push us over the top to finish it. There are other grant opportunities coming up in May, the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund that I'm looking at for the potential acquisition of this property. And I might bring that to the board at some point here in the next few months for you to consider that. So hope we can acquire that for all the reasons that people mentioned, so.
Ms. Holtz, on those, if we purchase that property, it'll be able to come back?
No, sir. That would be one of the conditions, we would have to keep the billboards, very important to the businesses in Cape Cod. And they will need the dog force and whiskey rathers at this point and magazines. But if it would, there, there you go. They could stay there and if the state should ever condemn that property, we would want to be able to move them at our expense, at our expense to back to keep. But that is, I think, a very reasonable caveat to that person.
I mean, that's just me doing my due diligence here, so.
Yes, sir.
Any kind of easements or stipulations?
Absolute.
That we'll get to at the proper time. One thing you had that stuck out in my mind here, Frank, is if construction bids exceed the total funding available, I would like you to recommend that the board appropriate your own fund balance to cover any shortfall. Are you familiar with the referendum we had in regards to the trail?
I've heard bits and pieces of that story.
Was to, to, to borrow the money to finish the trail. Citizens at that time do not want and have not gotten any jury fund money. As Todd will tell you, his mindset that we never, ever apply jury funds to that trail. The trail started, the concept was it would be paid for in its entirety through grants.
Okay, then that's helpful to me, so we can certainly keep that in mind.
And I don't know if you're familiar with the history of the referendum?
A little bit of it, but that's, that's helpful to me. You know, what I would say to you, I, I would not expect that it would be a significant amount if we go that route. And certainly I'd come back to you all to talk about that, so.
We tapped into that to match the county $64,000 border law or whatever across the, uh, schoolhouse creek. So, so because that money has sat there for, since the start of that tax and never been used.
Yeah, and that's specifically for those kind of projects, so, yeah.
So that said, if we did have shortfall, that, that, that money is, is there for that.
Absolutely.
One of the things. A static curiosity. Maybe this, well, maybe you already broke my time, but we were talking about increasing, you know, the future of the town. How far is it from the tip of that triangle to the park that we have?
You know, it's.
It's not far. I mean.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, it's probably less than a quarter mile.
Just a thought, not going to get it decided right now, but if at some point we were able to get where you could walk or bike or whatever to our park, would that not be a good, I don't know what the, you know, I, I know there's some landowner between us in there, but just, since we're talking about the trail, it would be nice if the trail actually connected the amenities within the town.
Absolutely. I, I think that's a logical next step, once you get this part done. So, yeah. You know, the, the other thing too, I, I was not aware of this until recently, but the North Carolina Mountains, the Sea Trail actually kind of goes through, what's the road that cuts off? Once you get across Pettiford Creek and the road, um, drawn the blank. Anyway, the North Carolina Mountain Sea Trail goes back through there and there's actually some grant funds available to connect to that, which would achieve exactly what you're saying and we can look into that, but.
I would tell you, I'm really adamantly against that trail going to the tip of that intersection due to the fact that has a very, very dangerous intersection. I would not want any child, anything going around that corner because they'd drive crazy through that intersection as it is. So any possible means if we purchase that piece of property and run that trail across there, I'm all about that. Just keep away from that tip. I'm not, I do not like that idea at all. It's totally too dangerous. Not to mention, and I'm going to say this further, I really want to look forward, uh, in the coming months or as soon as possible. You know, Frank, I want to mention this to you as well. I'm not going to say openly, but find some type of pedestrian crossway across Taylor Notion 24. And also I would like to see where Basial Park and Cape Cod, all Cape Cod is connected by a sidewalk, on that side, just where we could connect all the communities into one because we got a nice trail, but hard to get to. What are we going to do?
Frank, are you familiar with the future plans? And I, I can't remember exactly when we discussed it previous boards, but the, the fact that, uh, that DOT is buying a roundabout up towards that.
I'm familiar with that, yeah. I think that's an important consideration as we talk about buying this parcel for sure. But I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon.
At Taylor Notion and 58?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
I don't know where it's exactly going to be, but I do know it's there.
Well, I know that that corner has been petitioned by a lot of citizens to get a intersection stoplight there. Of course, it failed every time and then they put that long merging traffic lane. But I will tell you, that is a dangerous intersection as we speak.
Yes, it is. And that's, uh, that's probably why they want to put a roundabout.
Slow the traffic down.
Yeah, slow the traffic down before we get there, though. I'm just throwing that at you. I don't know if that mayor's doing any research as to what DOT's plans are.
Absolutely, yeah.
Refresh our memories on that. I spent like three years.
Yeah, you know, one, one, one other idea just to think about, and it's really just in my mind is, um, you know, maybe if we did acquire this parcel, maybe it would make sense to kind of relocate Taylor Notion Road to kind of make a turn here and come out and create a 90-degree intersection here. I have no idea if that's smart or not smart, but it's one of the things I've been kicking around in my head to improve the safety at the intersection more than anything else, with DOT, obviously, uh, yeah.
That's been one of their things for the past eight years now, was to go out and eliminate all Y intersections. They want to make them all T's.
Yeah.
They started with the smaller roads and this one I think is going to be part of that as well. Whether it's a roundabout or they do like you're talking about, making that an actual T intersection.
I think, I, I think it's a good solution. I think it's probably many, many years away, um, but we'll, we'll do some more research on it. So I've scheduled just a brief 10-minute break, uh, right now and, um, we're actually right on track. We're two minutes behind the schedule, so, Mayor, I gotta go to the bathroom.
I'm out of coffee.
Hello, how you doing? Uh, well, I am. Your new police chief. I've been, I've been, I've been, I've been here in this area since 1987. I used to be at, I used to be at Brookfield. I retired as a chief of staff of the Newborough Police Department in 2011. West Virginia, I was a chief of police in, uh, in town, West Virginia, at West Virginia University. And I have since retired from there and the back we used to go to town and all my grandparents and kids are. Yes, I. Tracy, yes, she, we'll tell you, she has short hair. She has short hair about six pounds. She, she was here. Yeah, that's right. I wish you may have, uh, here, here, this is a best. Yeah, we don't, we don't do anything else. Yeah.
Let me know if you think there's.
They're now paying, right? The G S K has a station. But they pay insurance.
Well, what's 1,500? Well, how many bundles would that be?
Well, he said that instead of the 50 bundles, that he had.
210 bundles.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. I used to, uh, I used to work for a landscaping company and, um, and I tell you, you, there's a wide range. He bears. Yeah. I would inform you to, to, we did, they, Jeff. Yeah. Stroll it. Yeah. Yeah, definitely report that so somebody doesn't get it right. You put it out there on social media. Yeah. And somebody else will be, they'll pay the bill. Yeah, and then they'll get away with it.
All the different changes, 36, 37 years, uh, you know, down east, you know, back in the days when it was a little too lame. You know, road out here and in front, you know, and you got that little bohemian there down right across the street from, uh, uh, buildings, small town, so. Oh, yeah, it gets the goodness of the goodies in there, Nick. Ms. Holtz, Leah Bonkinson and Stephanie Cross, if you want to be in town. I've, I've, I've been, but there were, there were, I'm in the city of the Boston. At least, though, I'm impressed. Why, they both.
If we did, I would. Yeah, and I'm focused on just that area and the commercial. No, I'm sure there's a whole bunch. Yeah, yeah, one bite at a time.
Oh, yes. 24 or 740.
I, I got it.
Yeah, that would be for definitely.
So if we need DOT, that's my, I tell you, I think that would be awesome. Ain't got nothing to do with us. Hopefully, if only they would pass, but it'd be awesome if you could get to Cedar Point without having to cross.
Oh, yeah. We're going to need DOT's help on that, but, uh, yeah.
And, well, we'd have to have a secret.
It'd be great, I mean. Yeah, I mean, part of the reality of Cape Cod Red is everybody's kind of disconnected because of the big highways, right? So we got to find some way to get everybody.
An underpass or a, or a, uh, to better care of some.
Yeah, if you're going to talk to DOT, tell them the drill is the underpass.
That'd work. That'd be great.
Yeah. You think you could make that happen, though?
I'll call, uh, Elon Musk.
We're going to need an underpass.
I brought up ideas and doing like some tunnels, you know, rather than if we can't get over, it's, it's going.
You know, Elon Musk has got the boring company. He's got the new technologies to do that kind of stuff.
Honestly, that would be awesome. I think there's one on the island.
I don't think they're in the trade.
Yeah.
They've got that going underneath, uh, 58. Just one in every position to have a little issue, like.
I would imagine he'd probably hit the water table pretty quick here, but it's good, great thoughts. Ready when you are. Yeah, we'll play no Florence anytime soon.
Well, I played Frog on it, but I wasn't playing Frog. Oh, yeah, yeah, I knew, I knew Frog that one. That was not so bad. It was 858, yes. It's like, it's like a cross.
Those are the worst, uh, for the most stressful times, guys, and all that.
Reload my cold throats here. All right, guys, let's get going. It's my informal gavel. Broken banter irritated.
I can't have a nice thing.
You have nice.
Top, top wheel.
It's a store money. It can be broke, you can be. No, it'll be fine. I'll stay with this. I'm just going to break one today. After I sit for a while, that would fracture costs, folks. Body's running up some stairs, about a thousand.
So I, I wanted to, uh, let the whole board know that, uh, in response to the question from Commissioner Martin, we've got about almost $25,000 in the motor vehicle special taxes account right now. Um, additionally, we have 16,000, a little more than 16,000 in a PAL bill fund balance too. So, um, if we do need more money for the bicycle trail, I think we'd first go to the motor vehicle special tax. And then you'd have the option at least on the PAL bill if you wanted to go that route. So basically you got 25,000 and 16,000, uh, between those two sources, so.
Just curious, what, what is the annual average you'd say we'd get from that?
The special tax? It's a little over a thousand each month.
Each month?
So about 21,000, year or change. Sometimes it's a little bit more.
We almost depleted it when we used it.
I think it was about 30,000 we used last year.
Yeah, la- last year we brought, we brought in a little less than $12,000 last year, so about a thousand bucks a month, so. Um, the, the next item, number 13, uh, really just wanted to have a chance to, um, talk with you all about the future direction of the police department, uh, let Chief Preston, uh, share a few thoughts with you all. Um, I listed several things that, um, this was my list that I put together based on my conversations with Lieutenant Eschbach, my own observations, some of the conversations with members of the community, some of the conversations with you all individually, the things that I'd like to work toward for the police department in the future. Um, and really just kind of wanted to have an opportunity for him to share a few thoughts with you and, and hear your thoughts, uh, going forward. So, Ed?
Well, I, I think the memos that you laid out are pretty much straightforward with things that are going. Getting, uh, Pete underneath, I'll be right now with, with the department between, um, meeting different people, working on the technology, reviewing, uh, the status of cases, you know, all the things that you would expect Chief to do. But, uh, you know, some, some of the stuff that goes along here is, you know, where or what, uh, does the, the council, you know, want to see happen or would like to see happen? Um, I've been talking with Frank about, uh, various things, um, to potentially, uh, increase revenues for the department, increase revenues for the town, uh, as, as well as provide for better public safety. I know that some things have been lingering on for quite a while, like the R U O K project. I know that that's been lingering on for, uh, at least about two years now. I think I've got a pretty viable, uh, solution, timely solution, uh, to get, get that done. I'm on the phone with the, uh, with a, uh, technology that, that deals specifically with a device to work. I can get the, I can get the program, but, uh, the device to make it work on our computers as they currently exist. And I know that's another issue is updating the IT and telephones. This is a way to make it work with what, uh, what we already have. I'll probably look at about $350, $400 addition to, to the actual $750 for the R U O K program. I'm very cost-conscious. I don't want to, uh, go out and spend money, uh, just, you know, you know, things like, uh, updating uniforms that don't look like tactical uniforms, but still, like, the, the health and safety of the officers, uh, make them look, uh, as professionals can be and as friendly. And appearances is can be to include the police cars to uniformity. I don't like things to not match. I think that's just an OCD issue that I have. But I'll be very, very cautious with, yeah, there's the things that I move forward with. But I'll be very, very cautious with, yeah, there's the things that I move forward with the, the end buying, and if I come up with solutions, uh, having worked with some larger agencies, uh, I think I could probably come up with some creative solutions to not, uh, cost, um, excessive amounts of money to the town, uh, can be very fruitful with what resources we do have.
Are, are there particular items for the board? Are there particular items on this list that you think are particularly good or that you're not as interested in?
Uh, Frank, you have here potentially wrapping the vehicles, whatever color, it doesn't matter to me, but, uh, wrapping effect, value of a vehicle when it's turned back into.
I, I would not think so, um, we certainly can explore that further, but I, I don't think it would make a difference in the resale value down the road. That's fine, please do. You know, really, I, I, I just, some of them are black and some of them are gray, whatever color we pick, I'd just like to get everything consistent and hopefully a little warmer, um, feeling, friendlier feelings, so.
We gave Chief McKinney and, and his guys leniency.
Sure.
Black, we created gray, so somehow they turned the baby moon cup caps to black. The bigger here for me, uh, alternative strategies to provide SRO services to the school. I got a big question more up there, what is that all about?
So, we've got one officer right now who's a full-time officer that's assigned to the school, and then he basically provides services in the entire community in the summer, um, and during the school breaks and so forth. One of the ideas we've kicked around is maybe trying to attract some retired officers, uh, who could fill the SRO duties, uh, maybe two of them, they're allowed to work up to a thousand hours per year, um, potentially come up with a strategy where we use, uh, retired officers to be the SRO, um, and then free up Officer Di Stefano, who's our current SRO officer, to be out on the street. That's the, we're exploring that, it's really hard to find people for that role, and then they have to have special certifications, it takes a little bit longer, so, yeah, yeah.
We brought that up years ago also, to try to use retired people.
Yeah.
Additional police personnel. What are you at on your staff level, sir?
Uh, we are, uh, at full, we are, all of our full-time positions are, are fully staffed. We have two reservists that have not worked in several months, and we have, uh, five additional, uh, reserve part-time, uh, officers to do that, so, right now, we're in a situation where if anybody has to go to a training, um, such as a, a basic radar or a basic intoxicilizer school, those are forty-week schools, so, it does create an issue with moving, uh, you know, the schedules around, um, you know, as far as me working the schedules for them, that's not, that's not an issue for me, but we still have court still going on, we have all the other functions that, that still go on with, with the staffing, and we definitely don't want to be working people seven days a week.
What was your thoughts on proper staff?
I don't have a thought yet, it, it comes with you, because I need to look at calls for service and, and other types of things, uh, to give you a good, and I haven't got, I haven't had enough time to get there yet.
So that's not gonna be a budget issue this coming budget, right?
Uh, at this point, I don't expect it to be, if you all tell me that additional police coverage is important to you, then it certainly would be something we could consider, so.
I would pull out the fact that twenty seventeen, we were, I was on the war, in, in some sort of a budget crisis, as a matter of fact, that was the last time we had to raise taxes, if you recall, uh, and we cut, had to cut the staff level by one officer, from eight to seven, I think it was. And, uh, former chief, many times, I haven't asked him, if that was happening, he's always replied yes, I just wanted to hear from you where you felt you needed to be, but, since you haven't had enough time to analyze that, I understand that, but you'll make sure it's not a budget issue going forward for this issue.
I, I would think that we could probably, and I don't mean to, uh, interrupt, but I think that if we can bring the reserve and part-time officer staffing up, that we wouldn't need to increase the full-time staffing, uh, you know, I think that, right now, and, and that's where I'm putting my priority right now, to be able to address things without having an impact on the budget.
That's what we did with former chief, we increased the, the line item for part-time and gave him the, the leniency to add part-time as many as he wanted to and hold the roles, a certain amount of funding for those part-time officers without putting in any options.
I think that's a, honestly, I think that's a prudent, uh, approach to, to that solution. Uh, my caveat would be with that, and my position is, I, as a police chief, don't want to carry people on the roles where I'm just holding a certification for them. If, if I'm carrying them on the roles, I expect work for that, I, I expect a return on investment to, to bring them on, that's why having people in reserve capacity that, that do not work, doesn't help the department, doesn't help the town, and doesn't help the other officers. You know, so I'm, I'm very, uh, forthright in telling people, if you want to work here, that's fine, but you're gonna have to work, you can't just, you know, expect to get a badge and a uniform and not have to earn it.
So, uh, basically, uh, staffing should change from, where you achieve to your, your time, this particular way?
No, absolutely not, uh, and I would come back, if I came back and asked for an, an increase, I would, I would certainly approach the city manager, but also have a justification for it, for why, based on staffing, uh, or based on calls for service, uh, and needs and service packages that we're delivering, that, that's how I would approach it.
Yeah, I, I think our initial approach would be the SRO, uh, issue that we just talked about, and then the reserve officers, unless you all would like to do something more than that, that's kinda where we're at right now. Sure.
It's a budget issue, not, not just for the, the pay issues, the insurance, what was called, things like that, the benefits package, uh, but, uh, I, I think we, we went about five, six years now with that, that staff level, and I've got, heard a person complain, we still may think twenty-four percent police coverage, uh, fortunate to have our police department, that's, that's for sure. But, uh, that's, that's all I have to say, I've, I've tried to rely on the two former chiefs here this board over the years to kind of, uh, bring me something up that needs to be addressed.
I, I would approach it, you know, just like anything else, you know, I, I, I'm very keen on return on investment, as, as it, it goes to things like that. When I was in New Bern, we had a very large, you know, per capita, um, you know, officer to civilian population, but we also had a very large, uh, part, uh, part one category crime between homicides and, uh, aggravated assaults and rapes, and, you know, we had a very high crime rate there, back in the nineties. Going to Morgantown, you know, the, the service package was based, we didn't have those kind of crimes, but our service package and the officers was based on the calls for service, the nine-one-one calls that we had to answer, and we didn't just always increase the number of officers, but, but at a larger agency, we have the ability to move officers from one shift, so you put appropriate staffing on the shifts that are getting those calls for service, and I would take that same approach to be, you know, not just what I'd like to have, but what is appropriate for what's going on, and that's just how I approach things.
Well, I think, uh, you know, times have changed, I mean, the manpower, nobody's essential, a little bit of police officer anymore, I mean, and you had to, good luck finding, uh, the part-timers that you could use, and, uh, I, I totally agree, people have their roles, but of course, that's all I had, chief.
Again?
That's something I've struggled with for years, I'd, ideally, you'd have a large reserve force, part-time force, that could always cover the gaps, but the reality is, you gotta certify an officer, that you hires part-time, either he or she has got a full-time job somewhere else, meaning they're only available at certain times, not when you need them necessarily, or that officer's looking for a part-time job, just waiting for a part-time job. Occasionally, you're lucky enough to get one, maybe that's, uh, retires, maintains certification, just available anytime, but just, there's not a lot of them out there, I guess what I'm saying, and that's something we struggled with for years, uh, we authorized, the board authorized, I think, five part-time positions, three, four years ago, they've never been able to build them, maybe one or two here and there, and they kinda come and go.
So, how many, are we calling them reserves or part-time? What are we calling them?
I, I just prefer the word reserves, because that's what they are, they're, they're reserve force, it's, it's kind of a military term that I, that I carry over, like, when you, when you have the reserve, uh, squad.
Normally, your reserves are the ones that are sitting over here on paper, and then your part-timers are the ones that actually work.
Well, they would have to work, that's, uh, that's what they would have, they would have to work, uh, and I'm also the mindset, a minimum of two, uh, days a month per res-, uh, reserve or part-time officer, just as a minimum, so the skills, the familiarity with the geography, uh, the familiarity with the equipment, the procedures, all of that, you know, because if they work for a couple of different agencies, the policies, procedures could be vastly different going from one to the other, so they need to stay in touch.
So what, what is the amount of money, are we paying this part-time south, uh, part-time reserves?
Eighteen dollars an hour.
I, I would like to see that actually increased, uh, this coming budget, because you are not gonna find any above eighteen dollars an hour for a part-time officer, I can assure you of that. Most, most of the departments in this area are paying up to twenty-five dollars an hour for part-time reserves. So if you want, if you want a part-time officer, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to increase that budget, I'm gonna tell you that right now, there's no way you can get eighteen bucks. There's a lot of security outfits out, there's now paying twenty-five, thirty, some of them are paying forty dollars an hour for security, an hour. So you got a police, a police department, you even have these guys coming here working for eighteen bucks an hour, not with no benefits. The only thing we need to look at, um, in, increasing that line item to attract people to come in to apply for these jobs, and you have a better line of screening than having a good officer, where that part-time or reserve officer may even become a full-time officer if he has some money to leave, they can just step right up and, and you're ready to.
And that's, that's part of it, that's part of the, of the goals with having, uh, those reserve part-timers, is to have that transition, and so that you're not stuck in sixteen weeks of field training, so somebody straight out of the LET.
That's a lot of money.
Uh, you know, because that's, you know, it is a lot of money, because you're essentially paying two people to cover the one shift, you know, so you can just think you're, you're, whatever you're paying a normal officer for shift, you're doubling that because they're in a training mode with, with another officer.
Yeah, one, one thing just to keep in mind, and I, you probably know this, I'm sure, but, our, our entry-level officer salary right now comes out to about twenty dollars an hour for a full-time person, so we've got to make sure that we've got some, yeah, so, which makes it that much harder.
Training standards does not even recognize the term part-time officer, they're, they're certified as either a full-time officer or reserve, reality is, a reserve is our part-time, but, training standards, they're, they're either reserve with a full-time certification.
And not every agency pays, uh, we didn't, we didn't, at New Bern, we did not pay our reserve officers, they, 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 they were volunteers, they, they did not receive pay at, at New Bern P D, and we had, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty, uh, there, and they were unpaid, and usually what they were, they were retirees.
That way it still is today?
I, I couldn't speak for what Chief Gallagher is, um, you know, he and I've only had a few meetings, uh, you know, since, uh, I've returned to North Carolina, but, uh, what I was getting at is, you know, the thing was, usually they were the retired officers that just wanted to keep their certification, so they would come in and they would work sixteen hours a month, two, you know, two eight-hour shifts, uh, you know, at the P D, but, you know, like Sergeant Harvey, you know, he was my, he was my first sergeant ever when I was on the road, and he, he was one of our reserve, you know, reserve officers, and he would do, he would work, uh, his months, but he would do all football games, because we, you know, and that's what he would do, he'd come out and he'd work the parking details on the football games.
Well.
He was, Dave was.
But he was also paid, um, but in my experience, starting back and then without backing, he's packing today, that we, you slingshot weapons. We were, that's the way we were, we, the part-timers, reserve, the reserve officers would work sixteen hour, they were required to work sixteen hours per month, and they were not paid, but however, you started losing officers because you were not paying them to work, so, then the town was sort of paying them, and then we started having people starting to apply for these jobs, so, money talks now, it's not, it's not about, they're walking up to the departments now and saying, and he ain't saying, what can we do for you, it's like, what are you gonna do for me? So that's the attitude of some of these new generation officers they're walking into, unfortunately, but I think we need to look at, I mean, even the salaries overall, because it's not gonna get any better, and, um, I would like to say good, uh, continue good for department moving forward with this.
And, and I plan on, you know, coming back over, you know, over the next several years with, you know, plans, you know, I, I plan on having a, one of the things I've always worked in as, as the chief and as the chief of staff at New Bern, was having a five-year, uh, plan for, you know, for the agency, and, and that five-year plan, it had everything with, uh, your, your movement, it dealt with your equipment, it dealt with your technology, uh, but we also did our, our career development on how, you know, on how we wanted our people to move, uh, you know, because if, if we at the agency don't give the officers challenges, and like you said, the new generations particularly, giving them something that they see reward for themselves out of it, and career development is one of those things that we can definitely use for that to enhance their ability, but it also increases their professionalism, it also increases their technical skill a, as it go, as it goes along, and, you know, and that's, that's part of what I wanna bring forward, you know, I, you know, too soon into it right now, but I, I, I see things that we can be doing along the way in the future to get to those points, you know, to, where we may not have the salary, what else can we do besides the salary to do that attracting, make, make it an attractive place?
Frank, we're five months away from adopting budget, and, um, I think, Ed said here, five-year plan, be interested to see every department's five-year plan.
Sure.
And I think you mentioned that maybe.
Absolutely.
Because that does have a direct impact on, on listening, and I totally agree with, Commissioner Ward about, um, raising the, the, the part-time pay, but I want to point out, we have always listened, former chief, former town manager, what they thought was appropriate, and, you know, hey, you know, they wanted eighteen, they got eighteen, they did one in twenty, I would have probably said, okay, uh, but that, just to make sure.
Yeah.
We didn't say, yeah, you, eighteen's it, that's all you're gonna get, so I'm open, I'm open for that to be included in the budget, I think it's, it's crazy to pay, uh, averaging twenty dollars an hour for that officer in eighteen, you know what I'm saying, just kind of make it a little lower.
I would believe if it's gonna be, if the starting salary for a new officer is twenty bucks an hour, then this is paid a part-timer twenty dollars an hour as well, starting off, at least you got something to go by.
Yeah.
Uh, these I have seen recently, these job fairs are popping up, they got one actually at the Delott Motorsports coming up, huge one, and a lot of these towns and departments are paying, sign up to be a police officer, paying one twenty-five to thirty-five hundred dollars to sign up to be a police officer, but, but we ain't gonna do that, but, but I'm just saying, that's where it's heading to, so, I think we need to sweeten the pot a little bit to attract, but we got a beautiful town, give me enough to work into, a great place, why can't we make a little bit more, you know?
Well, I think too, you know, we can certainly, I don't think we're limited to twenty dollars an hour, like, for example, if we're trying to attack, attract retired officers with a lot of experience, I'm willing to pay them more than twenty dollars an hour, so we've just gotta be mindful of that balance going forward. Uh, it is. There's twelve thousand, uh, in the current budget for, I'm sorry, ten thousand, ten thousand. Yeah, about ten thousand, we're, we're right at bumping up against ten thousand dollars right now, seven months into the year, so.
And, and, well, I, I know, I know, I know the chiefs will, will know this, there's some other things, uh, like this, this, this weekend, we ended up using, uh, a good amount of overtime because of the search warrant and the arrests and everything else that we went through. North Carolina authorizes, um, the recoupment of expenditures that are, that are incurred, and, and I've already talked to Sandy about this, is making sure that when we have to expend for investigative purposes, overtime or, you know, paying for a lab or whatever it is, the expense is, that we include those expenses to the district's attorney's office, so we can ask the judges, not a guarantee that we'd get it, but that is allowed for us to be reimbursed for those excessive costs o- outside of that, I don't know that that's ever been done before here locally, um, but, you know, that is something that, that I plan on pursuing to the fullest, you know, if somebody's gonna cost us money to basically police them, then they ought to pay reimbursement, just like a probationer has to pay a probation fee.
Reimbursed by whom?
By the, by the defendant.
By the defendant.
Restitution.
Oh, restitution. But in my my past history of that, it was not that successful because they didn't have the money to.
And some of them, yes, I absolutely know that too.
One, 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 one thing just quickly on the overtime, one thing to keep in mind is that we had a vacancy in the chief's position. We had a vacancy in another officer position. So we used a little more overtime through the first six, seven months. And so it all kind of balances out at the end. So I'm.
So I, when you go from the officer full time versus the reserve, how do you budget that? Insofar as like a man year, do you, do you, you have seven officers and they're gonna work a full man year each. Do you, do you break it out? How do we budget that? What I'm saying is if we have all these reserves and we're working them essentially two full man years, shouldn't we just hire them on as full officers?
Well, they're not working, the individual reserve is not working to two thousand and eighty hours a year like a full time, the full time employee, the FTE is. Um you know, we may, we may get out of them, if if we get twenty four hours a month, you know, times twelve months, we we get less than a hundred hours a year out of, or right out of a hundred hours.
Right, but that's each person. So what I'm saying is if from this pool of reserve, you end up working two full man years.
Okay, seven, I'll say seventy, seven reserves at, you know, at twenty four hours a month, we're s- we're still not even to two thousand hours.
Okay.
You know, so you're not even to a man year.
And that's how you budget that.
I I think what, 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 what you're saying, what you're saying makes total sense. I- if we were truly using two people's worth of part time officers, reserve officers, would make total sense. But the reality is, we can't find anybody to work the reserve shift.
Right, right.
Like we spent three hundred and ninety six dollars on reserve salaries so far this fiscal year.
Okay.
But if we did, if we were spending eighty thousand, yeah, we'd be talking to you about.
And that's what I'm saying. If we're, if we're spending um as much money as having a person, let's just hire a person, right?
The tipping, the tipping point should be two thousand and eighty hours because that's what a full time employee works. That's a man year. That should be the tipping point. If we're not even approaching two thousand hours, that's not a, that's not even a discussion to have to going over to that part of it because then you're not talking just the salary, you are talking the benefits, which is essentially take forty percent and add it on to that expense. So if it's a hundred dollars, it's a hundred and forty dollars.
Right. I got completely clear. Thank you. That's all I had.
Overtime, you should support overtime.
Right, that's true too, yeah.
Mike, I just have one question. I know, I know we need to move on. Um you as well, chief. So we talk about uniforms and we're talking about cars, I mean, color schemes and stuff. Is the money in the budget gonna be suffice enough to supply the changing of the uniforms and the car moving forward?
Except for my goal.
Need to look at that as well or?
Yeah, so it it really kind of depends on what kind of direction you all give me today. If you all are open to that idea and supportive of that, then I'm gonna try as hard as I can to put the money in the budget so that we can implement those changes next year. If you all say, hey, it's really not that important to us, then obviously we'll do something different. But my goal is to, if you're receptive to those ideas, my goal is to include that money in next year's budget.
Well, my question, I don't want to interrupt you, but do we need anything else for any type of capital improvement to the department, new radios, new things like that? I mean.
We're actually, we're actually in pretty good shape. Uh we've got a grant for, uh we've got all the cars equipped with um cameras in the cars. We've got a grant for body cameras that were in the purchase of acquiring now. We've got a grant for new laptops in the cars. The cars are all basically brand new. So I think from an equipment standpoint, we're in pretty good shape. I'm sure there's always something.
Yeah.
The good news is there's a lot of grant funding for some of the smaller items that department's been active uh in seeking, so.
Well, I'd say a freshness come to the uniform side of it. A new, a new freshness to that, thought moving forward. I mean, it could be everything uniform.
But then that's, and that's part of it. I I want everybody to look the same, otherwise it's not uniform. But uh I I don't, I'm not opposed to things like the external vest, but we don't need to go around with tactical vests looking like we're getting ready to breach a door in collusion. But you know, they make vests that are very appropriate, that pull the weight off the hips, that uh essentially match a dress uniform shirt, you know, and and whether you go with a light blue or a LAPD navy blue or whatever, there are alternatives and options. I'm not just gonna arbitrarily go do something. First, I'm gonna come back and say, this is what I'd like and let you and the city manager say, we think this is more appropriate for our town, what this looks like. But I don't want us to to look like we're a half bicycle cop, a half tactical entry team um with a, with a bottom half that looks like it's straight out of LAPD. That's that's not the look that I think is a professional look as a police chief. And I don't think that most of the town, you know, like I said, I, you know, I want, you only get one chance to make your first appearance and I want to make sure that first appearance is always good.
That's right. I don't, I don't want to be military, but also I don't want to be like, you know, not one of you guys running around short shorts.
Well, fair, fair enough.
Well, uh that's a grant that I'm actively looking at right now. Uh so the, but there's a lot of different. There's, there's a lot of different things that are out there, but I don't want to bring them in just because we can. I want to bring them in when it's right to bring them in, when we need to bring them in and apply them in in that kind of manner. I don't want to go overzealous with anything.
I just wanted to let everyone know I didn't know anything. When Zach ordered those cars, they were not black. The reason we got free black was because we had no other option, it was black or nothing. So that was not a choice anyone made.
Black's not as bad as baby moving no caps.
Kind of wanted to let everyone know that was kind of a taken or taken out.
Okay.
Charlie, you got a question, sir?
Yes, I do. Uh I heard the thing about long term in the budget and I just walked in the door, so I apologize. There was a presentation given to this board a number of years ago about a very expensive upgrade that was gonna be mandated to our communication structure.
I was getting ready to ask that question.
So that our police department could talk to all of the entities responding to it. Is that still in the budget?
Oh, yeah, and that, that sort of caveat's in my conversation. It's a lot of times with the county uh communications, they do these upgrades. We had one in Hillsboro, where they, where they went to this new digital crystal thing and it cost us like eighty thousand dollars. I don't know if y'all heard, if you've heard of things, you need to be sort of looking out for theirs and expenditure like he says with communications.
Yes, I I know what you're talking about. You're talking about when they did the rebanding of of the system and that was with Nextel and and.
It's, it was eight hundred megahertz system.
Right, yeah, eight hundred, eight hundred megahertz trunk system.
Too much money for departments and towns could not afford it, so they ditched it.
Um and we did do it in New Bern. Um yeah, you know, that was, you know, and it was millions. I mean, it was millions that that we that we went through. The only thing that I know that's going on right now, and I was at the chief's meeting last week, um is that the county and Morehead City are looking to do an RFQ, request for qualifications, about the potential to go to dual band radios, use, still using the UHF, VHF that are in the vehicles now that we currently have, but going to a dual band uh radio system that everybody can talk to all the way around on the portables. But they have it, it's, it's not a budgeted project. They're just doing RFQs for it right now, a feasibility study. That's as far as they're going with it. Uh and that was as of uh the twentieth, uh when I had the meeting with the the chiefs and the sheriff.
Obviously, you probably don't have to sum it out. What was that do, if that was to go through, what would that cost?
It it's gonna depend uh, you know, on on the feasibility study and then the price and what types of radio systems they go to. Do they go to the eight hundred megahertz platform? Do they go to the nine hundred megahertz platform? You know, so you can add about thirty five hundred dollars per radio uh just going in the eight, in the eight hundred meg band. I don't have a price on on the nine hundreds because I've never been in the nine hundred band. But that's what, that's kind of what it, what it looks like, about thirty five per. But as, but there's also grants that go, that go with that. Um and whether you go with a Motorola radio or a Kenwood radio, because that has a significant uh impact on the pricing as well, based on the vendor. Yeah, I I plan on not ever surprising anybody with something like that. That's something that takes a lot of planning and a lot of prep work to go in. And having been through an agency that went through that, it's not fun. I really don't want to have to do it again.
And and that's something we'll get a better handle on before we get to the budget and include that in a five year capital plan as well, so.
That's all he wants.
And I'm glad it came in. I totally forgot about it. This conversation.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
It was eighty grand at that time, maybe.
I'm thinking more than that.
I know, six years ago, that's about what it cost.
Well, that's why I was asking, because I I know a lot of areas, Cherry Point's upgraded their system to a trunk system and we're getting interfaced with that, but.
Yeah, well, when I was at New Bern, we, when we did, did all that, we included Cherry Point because New Bern was the selective router. So we ran the nine one one.
Yeah.
For everything in in Craven County, plus we did the records management switch over at the same time. So we put everybody in Craven County on the same RMS system. I've been, you know, this, I've been through those things already and there's some things I never want to repeat again.
Very good. Uh moving on to item number fourteen. Really just tried to lay out for you in the written materials, my goal to relocate the police department into the same building uh with the town administrative staff at some point in the future. Uh looking at a scenario where perhaps we would move the department into this building uh with the administrative staff. I think we have the space available to do that. We would need to add a few walls, move a few walls. I don't think anything too significant. Uh also looking into other buildings uh in the community or other locations in the community that may work uh in the future going forward. Uh tough to visualize, but I tried to just break down how I could see it working in this building. Bottom line is, I think it could work uh in this building. And certainly we would advise the board of what our plans are and bring you construction contracts and all those kind of things at the appropriate time. But that's the direction uh that we're heading. Again, whether it's in this building or another building uh in the town. And I just want to make sure the board's comfortable with that. If there's anything we ought to be thinking about, there may need to be an appropriation in the budget next year to cover building walls, for example. I don't think it's gonna be too significant.
You're talking about interior walls.
Interior walls, yeah, yeah. Any, any, I see some nodding heads. Any thoughts on that?
Too many geos is.
Yeah. And I, and I would like to at some point um repurpose the building that the police department's in currently, uh whether that's renovating that in some way, whether that's tearing that down and redeveloping that site, whether that's the town building something there, whether that's a private developer building something in the future. Those are the things that we are considering right now and working towards. So just want to make sure you're aware of that and reasonably comfortable with that, so. Okay. Fair enough. Um nu- number fifteen, I will try to move us along as quick as I can, but please tell me to slow down if need be. Thank you, Ed.
Yes, sir. If anybody needs me for anything, just give, give me a holler because you'll see me everywhere.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, number fifteen is just a comprehensive rewrite simplification of the unified development ordinance. Um that's something that, as I envision it, is not gonna have a cost impact uh for us in the future, but it would require a significant amount of my time uh to put that together, obviously work with the planning board and ultimately with the board of commissioners uh to make that happen. I would like to take our existing UDO, which is about as thick as this right now, and greatly simplify it. Um and hopefully make it much more user friendly uh for the the developers, the landowners, the staff, the planning board members, the board of commissioners, um hopefully have a more efficient process. I I laid out several of the things that I've been thinking about in my first six months here. Um you know, for example, we've got five residential zoning districts. Maybe there's an opportunity to collapse those into one or two or maybe three and and simplify things and make it easier to understand. Um I've talked to you a little bit about our stormwater ordinance. Um I think it's got some subjectivity to it that I'd like to eliminate and come up with something that um in a reasonable way helps manage stormwater in the town, but doesn't burden any of the existing property owners or anybody building a new house. Um we've got provisions in there about nonconforming lots. They're primarily in the Bay Shore area of town. And in order for someone to develop those lots, they essentially need to go through a title search process and prove to us certain uh attributes of that property. And so I'd like to simplify that in some way for people want to work on clarifying the site plan review process. It's not as clear as I would like it to be. And ultimately, I envision a system where ultimately the planning board and the board of commissioners would approve the site plans. And honestly, hopefully it becomes a rubber stamp process. I mean, if we've done a good job upfront deciding what kinds of provisions we want to include in the ordinance and if the applicant or the developer meets those requirements, hopefully it's a matter of just approving that and going forward, hopefully in a smooth, efficient way uh for people. Um also looking at some sort of new zoning district for the triangle area, uh absolutely working in partnership with Mrs. Holtz and the Swains and other property owners in that area, considering the commercial properties that are already developed in the triangle and maybe coming up with a new zoning district just for that area. That in my mind is very flexible and quite frankly, very lucrative uh for the property owners in that area so that you can spur the kind of investment that you'd like to see uh in the community. Um standardize the building heights. Um I was surprised to learn that we actually allow fifty five foot tall buildings uh in the commercial zoning district. And that's pretty tall. Um and that's just maybe something we want to think about going forward. Do we want something that tall or do we want to generally keep it forty feet? Um I don't think there's anything um over forty feet anywhere in the town right now. And that's something you just might want to think about going forward. Um and then finally, um you know, there's been some conversations by the planning board recently about maybe tree preservation. Um then natural areas maybe requiring certain dedication of parkland. Um I generally like to provide incentives for people to achieve our goals as opposed to requiring them to do certain things. I want to try to give the applicant and the landowner as much flexibility as possible and incentivize whatever it is we want, whether it's trees or more parking spaces or stormwater, whatever. So those are kind of the general thoughts that I'm thinking about uh going forward. And that's something I, I don't think it'll cost anything. It's really just gonna take a lot of my time and energy and want it to be a very cooperative process uh with landowners, with um the planning board, with you guys. So that's one of my big goals for next year. If you're comfortable with that, if you say, hey, no, we're good with what we got, then I I won't make it a priority, but that's where I'm headed, so.
I would love to see that set up. And I would like for, and I agree with you. I think I would like to see you put this together and then bring it to planning board and then it can come to us, but really no point and it's gonna make it a lot messier if we try to make it collaborative from the beginning. And I believe that you have the capability to get this put together and then we can make adjustments as necessary. So I'd like to see you go forward with that personally.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I'm absolutely gonna be incorporating all of the comments from you guys and planning board all along the way, but but get it to a final form so that the planning board, then ultimately you can say, yeah, we like that or, you know, hey Frankie, you missed the boat on this particular provision or whatever it is, so.
I got a stupid question. I'm an old country boy. How many feet is that story on fifty five? How many stories is a forty foot building?
I don't know, four, three to four.
I think you, you, you could certainly get three.
Three to four.
Yeah, three to four. I think fifty five, you probably get four to five, you know, depends on exactly what you're doing there, so. Yeah, and and you know, that that's a great example because personally, I think the community would benefit tremendously from a new hotel in the town. And so maybe for example, we would only allow hotels to be fifty five, or maybe we'd let them be sixty, or whatever you think the right number is. But I don't, my guess is the community probably doesn't want any other types of buildings going that high. Maybe they don't even want hotels, but you know, kind of thinking about those kind of things and making sure that we promote what we want.
The other thing, I'm sorry, the other thing along that line you've got to look at, and I don't know what kind of equipment they got over there, but you gotta look at our apartment when they're getting built.
That's right, absolutely.
Or slatter trucks, something like that. How high can they get, you know? I don't, I don't know. They might be able to accommodate sixty or eighty, but I don't know.
Okay, well, that's, it sounds like folks are generally comfortable with that. That's where I'm headed with it. Um and that's really, I think, gonna be something that happens over the course of the whole next year.
Yeah, and I I will say that, you know, your last bullet there on the incentives for all that stuff there, um I I like that. I know the last planning board meeting, a lot of talk about the, the trees and and things like that and I I don't, I don't exactly know what that looks like, but you brought up uh basically it being an incentive, not sort of like a regulatory thing. That's gonna be tough to regulate someone's trees. I think it would be, I like your idea of the incentives part, part to that.
Okay.
So just taking that a little bit out of, from the last planning board meeting.
Okay.
I totally agree with Commissioner Lawrence on that. I'm not forcing anybody to. I totally agree with Commissioner Lawrence on that. I'm not forcing anybody to, you cut that land off, don't cut the tree. We don't want to be pine on short.
Yeah, and, and actually, Ms. Holtz brought it up, the, and I'm new to this, this pine bug beetle thing. I just took a pine down in my yard and everything you said was exactly true. I just, that would be tough for this board to get involved with. That's a slippery slope, I think.
Master garden, okay. I've done all that stuff. But I think I'm right, that a full grown oak tree will absorb 150,000 gallons of water a year. And a pine tree is like 100,000. So the incentive to incorporate a tree?
Yeah, and that's why I think it sounds better to me.
Yeah, I just, you know, educating, I'm not, I don't have my exact future.
Yeah. Anyway, I just wanted to point that out for that last bullet. Thank you.
Okay. Number 16, really just wanted to kind of briefly go through the whole town center concept, the triangle, new roads, new parks, et cetera. Laid out some different things there. I've had several conversations with Mrs. Holtz and with the Swains about making that vision a reality at some point in the future. As I'm sure you all know, it's complicated and there are a lot of variables at play in that, but still working toward those things. I think from the board's previous comments at the beginning of the meeting, maybe a greater desire to focus on the things we can control ourselves more so than maybe relying on other landowners at this point. So if that board is comfortable with that, that's the route that I will take. The one thing I would say, and I hope that Ms. Holtz knows this, whatever we do down there, I want to be cooperative with, with her, with her family, with the Swains, with any other affected property owners in that area, and try to move it along so that it's a win-win for everyone involved in it. Very much a long-term thing. It would be helpful to have a new road connection through there somehow, some way. You've got to go around your elbow to get to any location around the triangle right now. Played around with lots of different sketches on road layouts there and, and talking with Ms. Holtz and her son about maybe trying to do something at the VFW road intersection in that area. Still working through those things. The, the new park, I will absolutely pursue the Swain property that we talked about a little earlier today. There's a new grant opportunity, the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund that's coming up. Those applications are due on May the first, so you may very well see a grant application from me in the next few months for your consideration going forward. It may be for something like that. Now, I've already reached out to the Swains about that issue. Lastly, the, the wastewater treatment options. There's an existing private treatment plant there that I'm sure y'all are all aware of. It's been a goal for this area for ever since I moved here in 1999 to have some sort of public wastewater treatment system, and probably long before I got here. There's, there typically are lots of grant opportunities available for those kinds of things. And so if that's something that you want me to focus on next year, please tell me that. Again, the budget is as much about the work plan as it is the expenditures going forward. So with that, I'll listen to your thoughts and comments, but just kind of want to let you know where I'm heading with things.
This is the one you wanted to speak on?
I have a note that you want to say, well, let's listen to her.
Can we just hear her first?
She snuck in behind.
Couple of things. As you probably remember, my son back in, gave written in, in-person statements that we do not support the land use plan, particularly with the roads that were outlined by the company that developed that land use plan coming from Highway 58 through the driving range over the sewer plant. Just totally unrealistic. Now, that said, we, we would always be glad to consider anything that makes sense, but I was so glad to hear your, your non-support of a draconian don't cut tree ordinance, because if the town really wants to ensure that no development take place on the 50 acres within the triangle, just put a don't cut tree ordinance on it and it won't be developed in my lifetime. So that said, I would love to get out of the sewer business. Brief history, my father decided to build a sewer plant back in the 1980s. And so he had Warden Smith come up with a, an agreement, a partnership agreement, and it's essentially a privately owned partnership, and it's operated on a nonprofit basis, pretty much. When the sewer plant was conceived, the owner of the Hardees was on a septic tank. He didn't pump his grease traps. His septic system failed. He built a big hill and put a second septic system on top. He didn't pump his grease traps. That failed. Then the man who persuaded daddy to sell him an acre and a quarter, which became the Western Steer Steakhouse, approached my father to build a sewer plant, and my father agreed. And the deal was the two restaurants, Hardees and Western Steer, would repay my father for the construction cost, use whatever capacity the state said they needed for their restaurant operation. And any remaining capacity would be my father's. So he designated acreage to put the sewer plant on and drain fields, which still exist. And the, the construction costs overran the estimate as they're normally going to do. The two restaurants stopped paying their bills for operation. Meanwhile, my father has died and I'm left running the sewer plant. So in order to make expenses for electricity and the plant operator, I tapped McDonald's into the sewer plant, whereupon Hardees and Western Steer sued me. Said, you can't do that. And I said, what are you talking about? The partnership agreement has nothing to do with how many hamburger joints go on the plant. And of course, I won, and they had to pay the $54,000 of legal fees. So that's the brief history. Now, if I could figure out a way to get out of the partnership and sell the sewer plant to the town, I would do it in a heartbeat. And in the past, I gave Zach Steffi the names and addresses of all the partners involved and encouraged him to inquire among these partners, would you be amenable to getting out of this private partnership and letting the town take over? I would still extend that invitation. I, I mean, let's face it, if I die, Mike's going to have to take it over, and I don't want to put that on him. So, and they have refused. I've asked repeatedly, who's going to take over its controlling partner? Nobody else stepped up. Not Swain, not McDonald's, nobody. Here's the caveat. I don't want it to cost the users, Mac Daddy's, now Revise, McDonald's, and the shopping center, a terrible burden for sewer bills. Now, and I take a real keen interest in that system, and it's operated just as well as I can make it with Dan Fork's help. He is the operator. I'm only the controlling partner. I run the show. He looks after the system. Recently, I replaced one of the big tanks. It's like an open metal, big swimming pool of stuff that's gone through with the air and so forth. It had holes in the side of it, and I just replaced that tank with a concrete one for $140,000. I keep a capital repair and maintenance fund and look after that like a baby. If the town can agree, and the partners will agree to put it in the town, let them increase the capacity if they wish, or leave it as they wish. It has reached full capacity. When we sold, I sold the shopping center to Swain after mother died, the contract called for an arbitrary figure that he would get 18,000 gallons per month capacity. The system was initially built for 25,000 gallons a day. Teeny plant, I mean a teeny plant. So I had to increase that capacity by 50%, which I did. And the, and the burden of that fell on the William B. McLean Residuary Trust and paid out of our pockets, and Swain got his 18,000, which he has completely used. So if the town can figure out how to make it a nonprofit system as far as the users, I'd do it tomorrow if the partners will agree. Warden Smith did the partnership agreement. So yes, I would encourage you, if you want a sewer plant, have at it. I would love for you to have it, and we'll cooperate in any possible way to that. But thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I've got a couple of things here. Not, not for you, Paxton.
Thank you.
I've heard, I've heard the history of the board. First off, just, just to say, reiterate what Paxton commented on the town center concept, I'm still not comfortable with it. It was a 3-2 vote, very close. I, I love the idea of what you picked up on as far as controlling what we can control. Paxton, I like you a lot, but there's no way in the world I would ever support this town taking that burden off your shoulders. I know you've told me many times that the last thing you think about when you lay your head on your pillows is that sewer plant. There's no benefit for our citizens taking it. It's ran flawlessly under private ownership. I just see it as being a burden to our, to our citizens with no benefit for them. It benefits the businesses over there, the businesses who put the bill as they have for 30 years. But I do have one question. Does the land go with the sewer plant?
The land is leased to the partnership for a grand total of $200 some money.
Does the land go with the purchase of the?
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
How much land is that?
Five acres.
But I'm still, I'm still, I will never support, and it's nothing against Paxton, but I know sometimes it's better to leave well enough alone. Bureaucrats have a way of sticking their noses in things, they can make, make things better. I totally guess, and I'm sorry, I can't.
I'm told that there are grants available in the structure.
It's not a money thing, it's a headache.
It could be for free, where you still have the same operator, you just wouldn't have any.
Well, it doesn't benefit the, it benefits the businesses, and they should incur an expense and, and, and go with it. Now, if we were going to talk about sewer for every neighborhood, yeah, I'm interested. I'm in. It's one of the reasons I thought, said, brought up the eight acres, maybe, I don't know. Just, it's just ran too good for the last, what, 30 years? And I know it's a headache. And if that thing fails, then the burden's on the town. So I'm sorry, I can't, I can't cope with that. No way. That's just me.
Yeah, one thing I would say in response to the both comments, if the town pursued this, number one, it could only be done with significant grant revenue. There's no way the town can do that without the grant revenue. Secondly, what I would say, the intent would be to operate it as a nonprofit entity, like most municipal wastewater treatment plants. And to me, it's really, I think the question for you guys, all, all completely valid points, but the question for you is, in the long term, 20 years from now, will the community look back on it and say, gosh, maybe we should have thought about acquiring that so that we could extend sewer to other neighborhoods or to other parcels? So I think that's probably the key question for you is, as a tool to control our own destiny to the maximum extent 20 years from now. I think if we looked back now 20 years ago, we might say, gosh, I wish folks would have done something back then. And they tried. I remember they tried, I'm sure, long before that. So to me, that's kind of the bigger question for you guys. Certainly don't want to saddle the town with any liability, but it's just going to give you more control and more flexibility, or I should say, your successors, more control and more flexibility in the future, so.
What's the purpose of having control? Just to say we got control. It's just like these ponds down here. Last thing that we ever wanted to do was inherit that problem. I mean, sometimes you got to learn how to play your hand and how to bold it. I mean, and I think this is one time when honestly, I think the biggest mistake this town had ever made.
Fair, fair enough, but.
That's my opinion, but it would be very, I would rank it as the number one barrier for this town if they tried to acquire it. And there's nothing against Paxton. I know, I, I feel just like she was. If I had that thing, I would get rid of it too.
Now, I was going to say this. This is definitely out of my, my lane. I don't know much or anything, I don't know anything about the sewer. This Paxton, you say it's at its full capacity as we speak, and is that what, gallons, how many gallons?
50,000 gallons a day.
50,000 gallons?
Now, there are a couple of vacant properties, the Swain property in Monmouth, that have, has it assigned to them.
So that, you kept that as well?
Yes. So if the town, for example, were to acquire Swain's acres, they would also require sewer capacity built into that.
So let's add it all into that.
Yes, yes. And I have a few thousand gallons that I could use to build a hotel, for example.
Okay, that's great. I'm glad to ask that question, because I did not know that answer. Now, Mr. Beck, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Again, this is totally out of my lane. I'm sure it is for, for us. You being in the sewer business?
I used to be number one in the number two business.
That's what I think. Okay. So if, if we were to purchase this, this plant, knowing that it's, it's basically set up for a hotel and all that kind of stuff as we speak, right? And others, right? And we wanted to say, we want to add on a residential area as a start off. How many gallons would it take to say, okay, Carter Rec, to add to that plant?
The way that plant is now, it's, it's doing a very good job for as old as it is, the condition it's in. Don is an amazing job looking after it, but it would, it would have to be expanded. You couldn't hire what's called a high rate, which is adding to the existing structure you have there, but you would, you would literally have to build another plant beside that. Now, what I would see there, again, looking in the future, and something I'm working with some people on now is a regional plant. And this would become an authority like our water system is to where the town would know it. It would be conglomerate of people investing into this thing, and then her sewer plant becoming a pump station. So that way, she would be, she would be sort of a, I hate to use the word middleman, but to turn that into where, you know, now all it is is a matter of her collecting that and then pumping it on, maybe having a filter system there to collect some of the larger, like a screen, so that way we're not sending any big debris, you know, out the way. But that's, that's sort of what, it's a very slow, painful process. Number one was where are you going to put it? Who else is going to do it? And getting the initial infrastructure, we're talking probably $20 million to be feasible. Onwash will be one of the potentials we're, we're handling with this group, as well as the two plants up the road here, which is another issue because they're underserved. They were over, overbuilt. And so they've got some capacity there we could look at. It all comes down to the infrastructure. You got to build the infrastructure. Just like you say, we want to put sewer on this side of town. One of our biggest problems is we're flat. So the gravity, we'd have to put in a lot of pump stations.
So that would be like a, a pump station if we had.
That would become a pump station. It's a big one.
So now I heard this, that it's like $1 million per mile to add lines. That's basically what I heard in the past. Is that some way?
That would be a very conservative investment.
Very conservative, okay. So.
Because here again, you, you build your trunks. Now you've got to go into the neighborhoods. You've got to build the systems. So, so let's say this street, for example, because there, again, there's the grate heading toward the water, which is like, you don't want it going to the water. And then you've got FEMA and all the other camera relations where you can put the pump stations. So it's, it's a, it's a really arduous undertaking, but it's still worth talking about. But as far as our town being able to afford to do that, it's, it's not feasible.
So Frank, so if we went on that, if we went toward, what, you're talking about this regional thing going on?
Right.
Would that not be a more of a grant that would take care of all that, and we wouldn't have a dime in this thing?
I would submit to you, whatever strategy you pursue, we would not pursue it without significant grant fund again. I mean.
That would be granted. Here again, you're looking at, just like the water, we, we're on the water system. We don't have anything to do with the water system. And that would be the same thing with the sewer. So how do I see the town?
And I like his idea. And Don, remember, we talked about this with Onwash up. We even had a guy that was going to sell us a package plant, remember? So we've had this discussion, but I'm more in line. So we've had this discussion, but I'm more aligned of, of what, what the mayor's talking about. And, and it goes from there, as far as outright purchasing.
Well, again, I don't know him one thing about number one and number two. When it comes to sewers capacity, I'm just, that's why I'm asking the question, because I have no clue.
She actually has reserved a certain amount for a motel at her use. So there is, there is capacity left on that plan over there for business districts.
And the hotels could be built in two more years, right?
And, and, and I, and honestly, that, that, that facility can be expanded.
That's just a joke.
That capacity can be extended, extended to accommodate anything that could ever be built over there. So, so that's where we're at. I say it's a private, it's, it's a private business, I, I don't know, leave it alone. I don't think the government has any business, uh, thinking they can do it any better than what it's been doing. I agree with Will. That's going to take some doing, we'll get the heads together on that one, but it could be done, I'm sure.
I do too, I, I agree with what the mayor said and I absolutely agree with what Steve said. I, I don't see any benefit to the town, it's just taking a sewer system, it's doing what it's doing today anyway. It's, except for now, it's ours. I would totally agree with what Mayor brought up as far as some, looking into something regional.
Okay, so safe to say wastewater treatment plant, not a priority, uh, at this time. Fair enough. Number seventeen, um, future park improvements. Really tried to kind of frame this a, a couple of different ways. Uh, one is that, again, that Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant, uh, that application's due May first. If there's a desire to try to acquire land for a new park, got to have time to put that together and submit the most competitive application. Uh, we mentioned the eight acre parcel that Swain owns right now, that may be something to think about. We mentioned the Taylor and Ocean Road site, that's something to think about as well. Um, if there are other sites that you think we should explore, consider, please let me know that. Um, the other piece of this is the whole idea of adding some playground equipment or maybe some picnic equipment or gazebo or benches or really anything you'd like to see in a park at one or more of the current locations that we have in town. And so we've got fourteen different sites, uh, there's a map in your packet of all those sites, I'm sure you're all familiar with them. Uh, the planning board actually engaged in a discussion, uh, last week about the Bahia Lane Park, uh, specifically. And maybe more specifically, just their desire to see some playground equipment somewhere in the town. It seemed like folks were, um, zeroing in on the Bahia Lane Park, but I think it really could be anywhere. Could be at the community park right behind us, uh, could be Bahia Lane, uh, could be the Quailwood Park, um, really any location you think is appropriate. So I wanted to just schedule some time for you all to talk about that, see if that's something that you'd like us to pursue, maybe consider a grant application, maybe consider putting a little bit of money in next year's budget. Um, I think that we've certainly got some capacity to include a little bit of money, uh, for playground equipment, if that's something you want to do, so. Any thoughts?
Yep, right, years ago, we, this Bahia, years ago, we got a committee together. They went out there, I think Mike King headed the dust, went out there, they got all this big plan together. The neighborhood didn't want that. Well, then, the neighborhood came to us with all these extravagant plans for a, a burn pit, a gas fire, a gazebo, basically for dogs, nothing in it for children. The last thing, time we talked about it, we allocated ten thousand dollars for that park. It was never used, it went back in the drainpipe. So, once again, here we are. It needs to be something done, it really does. But I, I think since the Star Hill people will be using it more than anybody. I think if there's a committee formed reasonable, maybe, uh, one of the Star Hill commissions can be involved or. Talk, you know, come back to the board again, yeah, you definitely need to do something there for those people. I mean, uh, there's parks all over Cape Corret, Bay Shore, they have nothing, my knowledge, uh, in, in the town related over there. But I don't think, you know, I had, our former mayor, I think he said, well, this, this little basketball goal, let's be done with it. I think we need to do a little bit more than that, uh, give it some more thought than that. But I think the citizens' input is very important.
The Bahia Lane area would be excellent for something like this. I think before we get too involved with it, we need to find out what the general feelings of the neighborhood, neighborhood is. Because, you know, it's time for talking about it before, but I wasn't sitting on this board, I was a police chief, so it was back two thousand and ten, twelve timeframe, they were going to put a park out there. And, uh, they had got a grant to get the equipment, put it out there. And those residents packed this town hall meeting one night and were adamantly against it. The main problems they had, one was if there was a park up there, they wanted to make sure it would only be people from the neighborhood allowed. You know, not everybody in the town, but they didn't want people all over town coming to their neighborhood. That was one of their problems. Then there was, there was also the problem of safety of kids, what's going to stop them from going out of that park, packing to the tree line and wooded area, which their backyard's back up to anyway, was stopping them now. But that was two of the things that they were, they argued about. So basically, towns, they gave up a grant, they had a grant for it, they gave it up, did not pursue it. And then it was a few years later that a couple of the residents did come to the town wanting a park out there and gave us some plans, what they'd like to see. But I think that's one thing we definitely need to find out, is the neighborhood in support of this as a whole? Or are we going to be facing with the next, you know, we start talking about it, they're packing town hall again, and we told them we don't want a park out there?
I, I think we need to find that out before we budget anything, because like Don's, it's been, it's been tough dealing with that neighborhood. They seem to can't get together on, on their own. Uh, uh, needs to be something.
Yeah, I, you want to talk?
Uh, you, you go.
Well, I just, um, everything you guys just said, uh, I, I, I agree with. You know, I live there, I live right down the road from that park. The, you know, some, some kids came to my door and were talking about this, and I thought it was a good idea to, to resurrect this. Again, we have fourteen parks and water excess sites and we don't really have a swing set on one. So to me, it's just, we either need to do something or divest from that property altogether. I, I don't know. Um, I do agree that I, I would like to, to talk to or find out from the neighborhood if that's something that they, they want. But at the same time, you know, um, what, what is that, uh, what is that threshold? You know, I don't know how many homes are in there, uh, to include just regular Star Hill. There's certainly a lot of people in there that, I, I think one of, one is an adjacent property owner to this park. They probably couldn't care less if that's a park or not. And so, you know, how many people does it take to, to turn down something? Is it the majority or is it just, uh, you know, ten percent that show up to these types of meetings? I don't know. But I do think it's, it's, it's worth looking into. I know you guys have been down this road before and I, I hate to even go back down it again for that, you know, purpose. But I don't know, I just see that there's a, a, a change. I think some new families are, are moving in, it's starting to, uh, those parents that you talked to then, their kids are grown, they're now looking at downsizing to a different home, and now we got a new, uh, generation, I'll just call it, you know, coming in. So I, I don't know, it's, it's, I think worth looking into, but I do agree with you, Commissioner Martin. I, I don't know what that money figure is, I would like to know what that interest looks like first before, um, really dedicating a whole lot of money. I don't know if we can, if we can get that figured out between now and the next budget meeting. But it would be nice to get that type of feedback to, before we really, you know, committed a whole lot of, of funds to it. So I don't know if we can do that in this timeline.
Bear in mind, you got parking issues, no parking over there. You need to create a parking block, unless you park on the road.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, this would all have to be, I have no design in my head of what a park, uh, a park would look like. I know at the planning board, there was discussion about, uh, a place for the little kids, not so much the bigger kids, like a basketball court, things like that. I thought that was kind of a good discussion, but again, you're absolutely right, there would have to be something figured out as far as, uh, parking and what, and the, the target area for this park, is it, is it kindergarten all the way through high school? Is it, uh, kindergarten through fifth grade? I think that needs to be dealt with.
That's totally different.
True.
I don't know if you're aware of this, Frank, that, that property was donated to the town. We tried to sell that property last year, year before, and we couldn't do it because it was given to the town. So we're stuck with it. I was just haphazardly joking with Zach about putting some plant, planters out there, but I thought maybe it would take off and be a part of a community garden, but evidently nothing's happened.
Yeah, so here, a, a, a couple of thoughts. I mean, one is when the planning board met, uh, last week, the planning board chairman asked for the authority to appoint a committee, uh, to basically talk about these kinds of issues. And so we certainly could do that, the Board of Commissioners could appoint the committee. Uh, we could specifically identify three or four people in Star Hill North. I don't know if they have an organized homeowners association or not, if it's their president or their, whoever they would like to designate. And so we could work toward putting that together and have the Board of Commissioners approve that at an upcoming meeting, take, uh, letters of interest or applications from people in the neighborhood, maybe have a commissioner on it, maybe have a planning board member, maybe have three people from the neighborhood or whatever you think is the right thing. So that sounds like maybe the place to start and then.
I don't mind doing it, I don't mind doing it, but again, I, I want this to benefit the community. Like I want just as much interest as, you know, Bay Shore, OK Corret. This shouldn't just be a Star Hill North Park. And I, to residents that think that that's what this is going to be, I think is somewhat absurd. But at the same time, this should benefit all of Cape Corret, you know, this, I think goes to our identity.
But the fact it's not going to be a budget issue, it's too late to gain to be a budget issue, in my opinion. I think, I think if you're going to head up this committee, there are, Commissioner Watts, uh, that, that should, they should be contingent on what grants that Frank's able to obtain from overall. Because I don't know how much money, Frank, what normally, what would you say would be a conservative figure of a grant that you could obtain for, uh, that lot over there?
Yeah, it really depends on exactly what you want to build out there. That playground equipment is not cheap. Um, some of the things that Ryan had in your packet, I mean, you're easily in the tens of thousands of dollars, maybe a hundred thousand dollars, depending on how far you go. But, I mean, I think we could put together a competitive application, the board certainly, when we adopt the budget in June, you might consider allocating a small amount of town money to be a grant match and kind of hold it off to the side or something like that. So I think there's probably different avenues we can pursue.
Is there a grant, is there a grant that you're aware of that would allow us to maybe look at all these parks as a single development or a single park and have a uniform kind of look across the town?
Uh, I, I think you certainly could, it's just going to add to the dollar figure and make it harder to secure the grant funds. But absolutely, we could, it would depend on what you want to do. I think my advice to you would be to start small and focus on one location with a, a very identifiable goal and go that way, but we, we could.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, this is more work, I'm sure. But if we're going to, even if we focus small, we need a, need a grand plan, right? We need a, a direction we're headed, right? If we just pick at these things, we're going to have a McDonald's theme parked over here and a, and then, you know, adult park over here or whatever it is.
Sure.
But, I mean, I think if, in the course of getting your input for that park, we can get input for kind of a grander plan, might give us a better direction to go with really all of these.
Fair enough.
Well, my, my, my thought, I mean, we're, we're part poor, one of the things. And if we go to, if, if we put a really nice playground park in Star Hill North, I don't foresee people in Cape Corret, if they're going to go to a big park, they're going up here Western Park, they're going to drive there before they drive over there. So because there's a lot more there to offer than would be over in your area. But since, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, but when that, when those folks came in that year, uh, uh, Quailwood Village wasn't built yet, was it?
I don't think so.
So you got all that area now, which they'd be walking to that park, I really don't, I really don't see it being an issue for Star Hill. Because if somebody wants to go to a really nice park, they're going that way.
Yeah, my, my, my family does, they go to Western.
They do, because.
They have trails.
Clubs are there, all the boy scouts, girl scouts meets there, everybody meets there because they have more room and more parking.
But are you, so are you saying that even if we built something, people probably wouldn't use it or?
Y'all would use it, village would use it, but I don't see people actually driving over there to use it.
That might be true.
I can assure you, Bay Shore would.
I wouldn't, I mean, I, I mean, I would where I live, but if I lived up here, I'd be going over there.
I get lost every time I go to Star Hill, I do. I mean, that's sad to say, but.
So I'm just saying, I mean, not the park at all, just making this special playground coming on there, which would suffice for what they're asking or what they have for that area and just.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Don't make, that's don't make a big issue.
That's where Frank back, where I was thinking is a way to connect the town board, overpass or underpasses for twenty-four. So that way, if somebody wanted to come down here to water from Star Hill safely, you know, they can go over. I can just imagine a kid on a bike trying to cross, you know, right now.
Well, and, and I think that's a good point. I, I mean, I forget who brought it up, sidewalks to Bay Shore. I, I think we need to, we have a connection problem, I think.
By the way, we had my sidewalks years ago and previous boards, I could go on and on.
Yeah.
Uh, Paxton, I got a question, y'all done?
I'm, I'm all done, yes, sir.
I got a question, Paxton, and I'm not trying to be facetious or anything, but does that building that's on the prairie land, does it serve any kind of historical value?
It used to be the public manager.
I understand that, but do you feel like it? And the reason I ask that, the condition of it, and recently we had an episode where a young person went down there and painted some rather good looking graffiti on it, a police officer. She's talented, I like to say that, but the police officer handled it very well. I personally, and I've talked to Frank about this, would rather see that building removed and a nice gazebo where it opens up the views to the water down there, but I don't want to. If it's got any historical value, uh, I know my neighbors are asking now, they're asking now.
I would agree with you, I think it has no historical value.
Yeah.
And a gazebo would be a lovely thing to have.
Well, you know, I asked you, I asked you about when Chris called, if there was any sentimental value for the marker out there for your dad, when he, he furnished all that out of his pocket, if you recall, by just like the check, uh, the historical aspect, you're a town historian, so.
I don't think the background knows any historical.
I don't, I don't need, I don't know something, but so, hey, your daddy might have made some big billion dollar deal in there or something.
No, 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 no.
I think the aesthetic, a little better than a gazebo, then, then here we're talking about building and put parks in, we've got a maintenance issue. We got to pay for that one for, so we either got to maintain that building or like you said, make a better use of that property. It sure comes with, the, uh.
People falling off of the equipment.
Exactly, that's just what I'm telling you, you got, you got a maintenance aspect, a liability aspect, all these, all these things we got to consider. Getting on to some other parks, this is just my personal. I, I'm, I'm, I love the fact that our most precious resource in our town is our water, in my opinion. That's why we're here, a lot of us, uh, we have failed to protect that. If you go down any end of any street in, in, that we have a park on, you're going to see where the, or, or, I, I get the, uh, surveys, you will see there used to be land out there, but this town for years has failed to protect that and bulkhead it like it should be. I think that's something serious that we need to consider. We just done the bulkhead, and, and you're only talking for the rest of the parks, you're only talking about a three, two, three foot bulkhead. Uh, if you want to get an idea, go down to the end of, uh, Bay Shore Drive, look at Bubba and John's Lot on the left, where they put the little smallest crossbar over there, the little shore. I, I think we're, uh, easy streets gone, you're going to go get it back. Man, it's easy, they're leaving us. We, we, we got to protect those parks, the, the land, and once that's gone, you can't go out, like I said in the last meeting. You bulkhead twenty yards out to water and backfill, that don't, that don't happen. So that's one thing I'd like to see, a concerned effort, concerned effort of protecting our waterfront parks by bulkheading and upgrading and existing the parks we have now, such as general maintenance that Ryan provides with gravel, sand, uh, maybe a few aesthetics and we'd like to see that. And we'd like to see that bathhouse torn down. And, and gazebo, I think I could get some volunteers, realtors and whatnot to, and those maybe to contribute some, like John, which he did for the stage out here. He built that out of his pocket.
All, all, all good stuff. I think what I'm hearing from the group is yes, you do want to make improvements to the parks in general. Want to make sure that we do something that the neighborhood's going to be comfortable with, pursue whatever grants we can, protect the water access points. And so that's very helpful and will work.
I think a, a five-year plan on this bulkhead should be in order here.
Not bulkhead, and there's like they're doing up here on the bridge is where they're doing the shoreline.
Shoreline something.
I think that's a great idea.
No, what?
Little shoreline, just where you, you're catching the waves that are coming up, just with a lot of erosion is and create a little spillway.
Where? That's, that's the Easy Street access, there was a little there, I first moved down there, but it's gone.
Well, I want to say one thing, Frank. That, that park over there where your house is.
Oh, well, we.
Yeah. I don't ever see nobody there, ever. So we have some parks that we have, but they're just.
But that's because there's nothing.
You just cut grass on them. That's it. They're not used, so what can we do to, what can we utilize those for? Now, we have parks that are being used a lot. Do we have some that aren't used at all? So what, what are we going to do with them?
I got an idea, Joe. Imagine that. And that Berry Park over there has entered my mind. We are a bee city. And I'm an advocate of bee, I used to be a beekeeper. That little park you're talking about with a gazebo over there? If you could plant, do some pollinator plantings in that area and eliminate your roaming, so to speak, maybe have just a few natural paths in there that you knock out with one swipe. Do some pollinator planting that would at least show the organization we're trying. Very inexpensive.
Yeah.
We could get the garden club involved. I, I will contribute some money toward it if, if that's an issue.
Forty thousand would be good.
That is a perfect, hey, that's a perfect park for that kind of stuff. I know what you're saying. The perfect park for that.
All, all, all good stuff. We, we'll absolutely work toward all those things and try to include that in the capital plan and in the budget going forward. So it's a little bit after twelve, it's like ten after twelve. We got pizza that has arrived. And so if it's okay with you, I like to just kind of take the break right now and y'all can get some pizza and something to drink, whatever you like. And then, Mr. Mayor, we can come back together whenever you want.
All right, let's do that.
So plan on twelve forty?
The whole day, sir. We're potatoes. Now, if you have that park you're talking about across the street from me, the most I have ever seen there is somebody, either riding a bike or walking dog, maybe stopping for a couple of minutes to sit down and move on. I've seen that park before, picnics, one time.
It was newer. That was one of them, new.
But that's not to say that if you built something, still would.
Thank you for lunch.
Yep.
Should the chairman leave here now?
All right. So we're back, number 18. Really just kind of wanted to touch base with you on the long-term public boating access strategy. Wanted to just summarize what the details are of the current lease agreement for the Manatee Street ramp. You know, essentially, we've got until 2031 to come up with some solution, whether it's to continue using that site with a new lease agreement, or whether it's acquiring that site, or whether it's acquiring something else, or if it's a decision not to have a public boating access ramp in the community at some point in the future. So I wanted to just put that out there, make sure everybody was aware of these things, and get a sense from you all exactly what you'd like me to pursue at this time, if anything. Like I said, we've got some luxury of time, but 2031 will be here before we all know it. Question is, how many of us will be here in 2031? So. With that, any thoughts on that, any ideas to pursue?
I got a big idea.
Okay.
Actually, you'll sell us the boat ramp.
Not right now.
Okay.
So until she's ready?
I knew that was gonna come. That would be ultimately, ultimately the thing, but life don't stop if we don't have a boat ramp. Because the county is building a huge facility. We got till 2031. Against Mrs. Holt's, that the town wants to buy that boat ramp. And if it don't work out, it's not the end of the world. It's nice to have one, but I think probably the only town that I'm aware of has got one.
I wouldn't say none of y'all joining me in boating, because I have to protect it by boating.
Yeah, I know, but maybe. You could agree to settle to us in 2031 if we boated today.
Or I could agree to boate period, which I'm gonna do. I'm gonna do it, and.
We've had that discussion, anytime. I agree with boating, but that's not my decision, there's five commissioners here, but. I personally don't see any difference between that and directing the product from here. You remember when we did, we contributed that.
I don't have a boat, and I've got to put thousands of dollars into repairing my boat ramp, which neither the town or the county agreed to pay a penny.
I think this board would love to boate a few sales of property.
Yeah, if it's ours, I don't have a problem doing that at all. If we can work some type of deal here, again, we got time to work out a plan.
That wouldn't work either, would it?
Are there any other sites that we should consider in town, realizing we've got limited area to work with? Is there anything else, or should we continue to pursue the potential acquisition, or maybe a new lease agreement with Mrs. Holt's, or is there anything else we should be doing, I guess?
Yeah, our property on the left-hand side would be a good place for a boat ramp too, but. Guess that's for sale either, isn't it?
But there are other sites, like the boat ramp on Bay Shore Park?
That would not work with two boat ramps operating out of one canal, number one. We've hashed this out, number two, Denny's already got a separate sewer system on that line. Number three, there's no way you can pull a boat trailer and back in in front of Minnie's house in those little. It wouldn't work.
If it would've worked, it would've been nice, but. I think having the one, having the one is sufficient for our small town at this time. And like you said, there's getting rid of big, big public ones, opened up just a mile or two up the road. So we got time.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Number 19, some of these issues kind of came up in the other conversations. As I mentioned earlier, we should complete the full loop around the triangle sometime later this summer, maybe this fall. Are there other sections that you think we should consider in the future? One of the ideas that came up was linking it with the kayak facility quarter mile or so north of the intersection of Taylor and Ocean and 58. I think that's a great thing to pursue in the future. One of the things that I guess I've observed about the community is it is really kind of separated. The roadways separate the three different neighborhoods and would like to pursue the idea of some sort of tunnel or some sort of pedestrian or bicycle overpass over 24, maybe even over 58. I personally would start with 24, since that's our community and keeping everybody connected in the town. But after we finish this section, again, hopefully later this year, what else should we be working toward? Is there something that's a higher priority, or both of those great things? What do you all?
I think we talked about it, I think interconnectivity, to me, is a good idea. I mean, I like how, I don't know what it looks like, you know, over, under, I don't know what it all looks like, but I do think that's a good idea. I mean, as we develop, develop, is that the right word? As we put things in areas like a park on Bahia, if that ever were to happen now, I think it's important for the people that live in Cape Codarette to be able to get up there, whether they want to go up there or not, you know, with their, you know, golf cart or, you know, whatever. The reality of it is, is they're not going to be able to drive their golf cart to Western Park.
I think that you have to bridge, the biggest issue is that you gotta bridge, or whatever, you gotta be able to cross the main road safely. After that, the rest of the ball, the rest of the small town is, but that is.
I mean, if we could convince NC DOT to build something like that over Highway twenty-four, that, I think that's a good thing, everybody's in support of that.
Absolutely. For traffic, which now we get a golf cart, or even a bicycle, unless you're picking it up, you know, one of the steps.
And they gotta worry about ADA.
Well, they typically have a long ramp associated with them to meet the handicap requirements, so you could get a bicycle.
But I think that just having the ability to get up there, that would increase your connectivity way more than like another sidewalk here, another sidewalk there, because in the neighborhood, they're not gonna use a sidewalk, and they're just gonna go down the road. That's fine, they gotta get, they have a place to get to, and everything is across the main road.
Let's face it, the trail is basically useless by anybody but Jim Daisy, you can't access it. And you can't access it safely, my neighborhood, or this neighborhood.
Well, and, I mean, to your point, you know, I still have to cross Taylor Notion,
and getting an eight-year-old and a four-year-old cross that road, it's a little gnarly, I mean, it's a little gnarly, so, you know.
Well, they do have control, pedestrian crossing, that's something maybe we could look at as well, which is, when, when they become controlled, then the traffic has to abide by the pedestrian crossing, and then for it, it'll cross it.
Yeah. I think acquiring that or parcel from Mrs. Holt's up there in the triangle would tend to be a good place for parking, a lot of people could go and access it. Trail too, so.
Yeah, and I think that would be a strategic parcel to acquire for lots of reasons, but I think the reality is, is people want to be able to leave their house and ride down the street and get on the trail, right, and not have to drive somewhere and lug a bicycle. So has this, has the idea of some sort of bridge or underpass on twenty-four come up before? Has anybody broached that with NC DOT? What was their response?
It was just an idea right now, and like I say, Friday I'll be bringing up a lot of that, but now's the time to do it. So if they're gonna do this super street project, if we have something in place, or an idea in place, then the state sort of takes on that responsibility after the fact, just like with the trail. So if we hadn't done this down to twenty-four before they started building, then there's no incentive for them to do anything for us on that side. So in that aspect, now's the time, if we just start seeking some.
Where are you talking about, placing them?
Well, that's the thing, don't really know right now, just gotta look at logistics of where it would be advantageous on both sides.
The idea of a connection down the south side of twenty-four from Bay Shore back into the middle of town, is that something worth pursuing with the DOT also?
Well, connectivity with Bay Shore, I mean, I can tell you, living there, they do feel disconnected from the town, there's nothing wrong in the past. At one time, they were, they were wanted to, unannex from the town and join Vogue, I mean, they just didn't feel any kind of alliance with the town.
Yeah, I'd like to see at least a sidewalk over there, from there all the way down.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great, that would be awesome. We had the money, I don't know what happened to it, that was, that was in that board prior to gone, I think, maybe, or when Minnie was on her own.
Yeah.
She keeps offering all the sidewalk money, the sidewalk money, but till this day, she's still, planes might've got gone, so I don't know what happened.
Well, you gotta make sure that feel like they're disconnected, but so does Star Hill and others, because they can't get across the road, period. So there's always been that disconnect on both sides of the highway. So that's, I really think we need to look, I mean, even, there's a lot of people in Star Hill, they like to take the golf cart and get to the business area, go, so they get a, get something to eat, you can't do it. If y'all remember, we had a bad accident with the golf cart right there in front of the hand, and one man was trying to cross the highway, he got nailed by the FedEx truck, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if he died or lived, I'm not sure, y'all remember that?
Tell you one thing, Will, I would love for you, and I'm not, for you to bring up DOT, is they can stoplight Fox Drive and Bay Shore Route, where that, you know, people been killed there, that motorcycle. You cannot get out and turn left there.
They're not gonna put one there, I'll tell you that.
It's terrible.
Yeah, I don't even go left, I don't even go left there anymore.
I don't, I always go to the right.
It's terrible, I mean, I don't see any reason why they can't put one there.
It's gonna be too close to the other one? That's what they don't, that's what they don't tell you.
Yeah, but they love putting one up here, fifty yards away, Bojangles, so, to me, they say one thing, but they do another.
They're actually supposed to be moving that road, I don't know if y'all know that.
Yeah, it's gonna be forty feet.
I thought it would move it past the Truist Bank, where it actually go cast, that's gonna be the main exit out right there, it'll move all the way that way.
Well, I do think you guys have a, I think you getting across twenty-four to get to that center is more important than us crossing Taylor Notion. So I could see the controls thing, like you were saying, for the Taylor Notion part, but something probably more serious for the crossing twenty-four part, and I.
Well, I know, over here at Yopon, Yopon over here, is so high that we discussed, well, my thought, was to put it under the highway passage, underpass, they actually had one in Pine Hill Shores, you remember that one?
Yeah, sure.
We were talking about that earlier.
So, and it, and it's still working well, from what I understand, I notice they closed, I don't remember, I think the storm took it out, maybe? You remember?
I, I think it's still there, but I, I don't know.
The DOT did it.
Yeah.
So maybe something we can look at, put something under twenty-four for okay part of the, give them that stuff.
And if we had that connection to Bay Shore, that would land across as well.
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, it sounds like there's strong support for these ideas, and again, I just want to make sure that I'm going in a direction you're comfortable with, if there's some reason why I shouldn't, please tell me that, but I think makes total sense, would be a great way to connect people and benefit the community. And that kind of feeds into number twenty, you know, kind of along the lines of creating a true downtown kind of feel, kind of along the lines of creating safer crossings across twenty-four, and kind of along the lines of controlling the things that we can control. Thinking about Highway twenty-four, I'm aware, and I've got a copy of the preliminary plans that they had put together for the super street a few years ago, which I think would have been disastrous for the town, or any town for that matter, but what I would like to do is approach the DOT about some sort of modified approach, not without the bulb outs, not with all of the crazy features that they had included in that plan, but really almost trying to make twenty-four the main street, you know, add, add the sidewalk all the way down to Bay Shore, do some trees along the right of way, do some flower beds, do some signage, do some better pedestrian crossings. I often cross from here over to just meet people, I feel like I'm gonna die every time I try to cross the highway there, and so just to create even safer at-grade crossings for pedestrians, bicycles, golf carts, pursue either the overpass or the underpass, those are the kind of things I'd like to engage with DOT, kind of share this whole package with them, and see if we can somehow get that funded into a comprehensive DOT plan for that area, that maybe draws on some of the elements from that super street, but not the crazy elements from the super streets. So that's basically what I'm proposing in twenty-four, essentially almost trying to create that town center street on Highway twenty-four, hopefully sooner, and then if anything happens in the town center, in the triangle area in the future, that's just gonna be a bonus and help us, and both of these very much long-term goals, but wanted to make sure you're comfortable with that, if I approach DOT, or maybe you say, hey, Frank, you know, that's great, but that's not as important as some other things we're working on right now, so I wanted to get your feedback on those ideas. Which it sounds like it's good, so, all right, fair enough. I'll try to initiate that with them. So number twenty-one, wanted to just talk with you, and this definitely has budget implications for next year, wanted to talk to you about the whole notion of hiring another person to basically handle all things development related in Cape Carteret. As you know, back in September, I came to you and proposed the new position to focus on zoning, code enforcement, floodplain management, all of those kind of things, and also provide other services for the town manager, or maybe public works, or police, or what have you. As a result of the board's discussion, we advertised for a variation of that, a building inspector position, and someone who would also do those same duties. As you know, I advertised, I got four applications, I had one individual who had the proper certifications, and I just had some hesitation about moving forward on that position right now. I think it was a quality individual, but really no experience in that realm, and I want to make sure that if we do this, we do it right. And there's also other elements associated with taking over building inspections, there's the whole record-keeping process, there's the whole fee collection process, we certainly can figure that out, that's not a big deal. The liability issues, it has become even more difficult to address liability issues for building inspectors, that's always a big concern, and probably the biggest concern is that I think it's really gonna be hard to find somebody the next time, and I don't want to be in a cycle of taking it over ourselves and then having to fall back to the county, take it over, fall back to the county, and so that's just why I hesitated, why I paused on this. But what I would suggest to you is that we need to do a better job on the development administration, the zoning administration, the code enforcement, the floodplain management, all of those kind of things, and it just takes an awful lot of my time right now, and often distracts me from some of the other things that I think you'd rather that I focus my time on. And so however we figure this out, I think we need to figure it out and do something. And so going forward, I think we've got the following options, one is, I can keep doing it, and I can delegate to other town staff, and we'll do the best we can. I don't think that's the most customer-friendly, I don't think that's the most quality approach to take, but we can do that, and we're getting by right now, it's just other things are being sacrificed. I can move forward with the applicant that I mentioned to you, assuming he's still available, and the idea that I've thought about with that is maybe having him shadow the county inspectors for three months, or six months, or whatever period of time it takes to get him comfortable with the building inspection piece of it. I'm still a little bit leery of that, because there's potential for conflict, there's potential for disagreement, there's a certain value in having multiple inspectors available, like the county provides, and literally just about every other town in the county has switched and is now relying on the county for that. But we could take that approach, the town would bear the full cost of that person until we felt comfortable that he could provide those services on his own, and we would start collecting our own permit fees. And so that's something that I've been contemplating. I've also had some conversations with Cedar Point about possibly hiring a full-time person to do all of the zoning administration, code enforcement, floodplain management, CAMA permits, all of those kind of things, but not building inspections, and essentially sharing that position with Cedar Point. So for example, under that scenario, we'd hire a full-time person, so theoretically, we would attract a quality professional person to do that, they'd be a full-time person, they would get health insurance and retirement and 401K and all those things, and they would essentially work twenty hours a week in Cape Carteret, and twenty hours a week in Cedar Point, or any other town that we might partner with, and it would just simply be a contractual relationship, where maybe the person would be an employee of the town of Cape Carteret, but we would essentially contract, Cedar Point would pay us half of the cost of the salary and benefits, twenty hours a week in Cape Carteret, twenty hours a week in the other town, mornings in one place, afternoons in the other, whatever made sense, and that would, I think, meet the need in a more cost-effective manner. So that's something I've been exploring as well. The other option is to hire a consulting firm to help us with these things, and that was something that I pursued early on in my time here, and they literally wanted anywhere from seventy to a hundred dollars an hour for that service, and, you know, on an annualized basis, that's two hundred thousand dollars a year, which is ridiculous, in my opinion. So I never really pursued that, because it was just not prudent for us to do that. So those are the options that I have for your feedback. In that budget projection, I did include a fifty thousand dollar salary for a person. When you add in all the benefits and so forth, that comes out to about twenty-five thousand dollars more, so it's seventy-five thousand total that's in that projection that you have. That assumes that we would not fill the vacant public works position, it also assumes that we would not collect any additional building permit revenues, we'd certainly still continue to collect the zoning permit revenues and floodplain and all those kind of things, and I would have this person do CAMA permits as well, so that's probably a small, little bit of additional revenue that's not factored into it. So I wanted to bring that back up to you, obviously, if I knew what I wanted to do, I probably would come to you and say, can I do this, but I haven't quite determined the best way to go, so that's why I wanted to mention it to you here today. I think we gotta do something one way or the other, so listen to y'all's thoughts.
What was the, yeah, I had all the certifications, just not the experience for it.
Yeah, that's right, he, he took it on his own to get the certifications, which I think speaks highly of him, and he's got the level ones in plumbing, electrical, mechanical, building and so forth, really just didn't have any experience with building inspections at all, and quite frankly, I sensed in him maybe his own concerns about his confidence level, and I had some concerns about his confidence level, and so it just caused me to pause. I think that I like the person, and I think could do a good job, I'm just not sure it's the best solution for us in the long term, I don't want to be back in this situation again, because once we cut ties with the county, and we're doing it ourselves, I mean, I hope the person stays like forever, for a long time, but he might leave, then we're right back where we were, and it's just so difficult to, to attract people for those kind of roles, so.
I got a question for you, Frank.
Sure.
Actually, two, first of all, I want to make, I read what they agreed that took over in the Singapore code enforcement, newspaper yesterday, I got two questions for you. What's the difference in hiring a rookie cop and a rookie inspector?
I mean, I think it's a great question, and so there's certainly probably equal risk there, I would think, and we've certainly hired rookie police officers in the past. We can, we can take that chance, and I would do everything I can to help that person be successful, it's just, I would just tell you, I'm hesitant, I'm leery about it.
How were you able to maintain, keep inspectors in their law, was your Jimmy and all?
So the reality, what, the reality is, I wasn't, and we had the contract with the county for that, and we probably did that, I'm guessing, seven, eight, nine years ago, I'm losing track of time, but it got to the point where we couldn't attract people and couldn't keep them.
How long has Jimmy been up there?
Jimmy's in Pine Hill Shores.
He was, he got.
Yeah, Jimmy was with us until, I guess, maybe two thousand and eleven, twelve, somewhere in that range, went to Morehead City, actually, after he left Emerald Isle.
I, I just, I still have a problem with the assistant to the town manager.
Yeah.
That's my biggest issue.
I think that, honestly, quite frankly, that was a poor title choice by me, so that was my bad.
I just don't see any difference in, people have to start somewhere, I mean, I would think a police officer has a heck of a lot more responsibility in decisions they would make out here with a gun in their hand compared to what a building inspector could do, I feel, you know.
I, I think there's a lot of validity to that, I think probably the biggest difference is that the rookie police officer has got six other people working side by side, that have a lot of experience, and that have been through many of these situations, and so has that extra resource to fall back, whereas the person we put out there, for all practical purposes, we're putting them out there by themselves. Now, certainly, they're gonna call the county if they need some help, or another colleague of theirs, but it's on a little bit different level, so that would be the only thing I would say is different.
I love that when we are, like, I wasn't on board then, when we are, Brandon, Brandon was level one, and the town agreed to pay him big bonuses every time he was level, he got way up there, the town ridiculed on it, and he quit, but that said, they have to start somewhere, I mean, but.
My, my thought with all this is, you see, you only have qualification, one qualifications, I'm not sure about that one. So you say we do hire someone and put them in that position, they quit, you back square one, and then you gotta go spend all that money trying to find somebody to get back in there. We got, the county already maintaining it for us, and I know it's income going to them, but we don't have the headache with it, and we don't have to worry about it being done. I think this adds more and more confusion and more issues with the town by going that direction, my thought with that. I just think we need to let the county continue doing. I think this adds more and more confusion and more issues with the town by going that direction. My thought with that, I just think we need to let the county continue doing what they're doing. However, if we decide, say, we're going to hire somebody, it doesn't be somebody that's young enough where we can train them in whatever we want them to do. Well, what we used to do, whatever, where that could be, you know, using any all aspects of the town. Because if something happened to Frank, who's going to step up? A commissioner, probably have to, a mayor, probably have to, something happened. But why would we have, why would we have to go to us when we could have that resource already in place? Actually, I would say be a mentor, be mentored by you, correct?
That, that was the initial proposal, yeah. Someone that maybe ideally would take my place someday.
I would have someone that's dependable and be mentored by somebody that knows what they're doing. Somebody that I custody don't know what they're doing at that.
Oh, I don't feel in as a town manager?
If, if something happened to Frank, some, of course, it would come to us as far as handling the town. But as far as things happen with the town, say you got to go and take a sick leave or vacation. Something happened, at least somebody knows how to handle the office stuff, not something on the verdicts.
It's like the same thing with a police department. We could do without a police department today. Use county. Same thing, same mindset.
Tell me.
Good luck with that.
If it was not for, take the, the building inspector portion of this, because he was never in, he was never going to be a full-time building inspector. He was going to additionally do some other things that you needed him to do, correct? So was the guidance we get, as I remember.
Yeah, so here, here's kind of the crux of the issue. I think the, the whole zoning code enforcement, local development ordinance administration. Realistically, that's probably only a half position, probably a 20-hour a week position, give or take. When you add the building inspector component to it, that's probably another 20-hour a week. And so when you combine them together, it made sense, full-time position. And it's a great thought, like I absolutely love that idea.
I was getting at though is you have concerns about the building inspectors, the building inspection portion of this because he is new.
Yeah.
What about the other half of it? What did you, did you feel as if he was competent to do that?
Yeah, I think so. You know, and I think quite frankly, it's less technical, right? Like I, I think it's easier to train someone for those duties. I just basically need someone to do it, you know, someone that I can trust to do that and not have to spend my time doing that. So yeah, that.
So we've had what 20,000, 19,000 built this year?
That's correct. Started.
We also gave them, the county collected close to 50 grand on building inspections.
Yeah, I think it's actually probably closer to like 75, 80, something like that. So but keep, keep in mind also, it's not just new homes. It's a deck, it's an addition, it's a repair.
I'm not getting it. I still think he would have plenty of time to do both things. But if he, if, if you think he'll fit the role that you need him to work, that he needs to get done here. I mean, I lean toward agreeing that you got to start somewhere. And if he's going to start in the building inspector business, easiest, I mean, this is a good place to do it. It's not like we're talking about high rises or anything like that. So if he, if he would fit the bill or the stuff, the work you need done to, you know, lighten your load to get you doing other things. And we also get the building inspection, inspections out of it. I mean, we may have to eat some crow, yeah, if he rolls out, but you could resign tomorrow. Any of them, we could resign tomorrow. Like no guarantee that anybody's going to be around. But if he'll fit that bill three year later and we can get that 75 or whatever it is in revenue back, it's worth a shot, in my opinion.
Yep.
No, but.
Just one, it's the only position in town that could be self-sustained through fees.
But he does have to be, I mean, if you're not comfortable with him being able to do the other things that need to come up, then that's a whole different discussion.
Yeah.
If he passes level, if the state gives him license.
Correct.
He's passed.
I'm talking about the other stuff that we're going to ask him.
Oh, well, I mean.
I mean, I think that'd be kind of.
I, I think maybe the best way to say this is it can be challenging to be a building inspector. And it can be challenging to deal with contractors, particularly when they're under deadlines and time is money. And when there are disagreements about a certain provision in the code, those are the things that get escalated. Going to get guys like me involved in that. And it's helpful to have someone with experience and with the right mindset to know when to be flexible and when not to, and when to ask for help and when not to. And I think certainly an individual can be trained in that. I honestly, I maybe the simplest way to say is I think I'm, if I hire that person, I'm probably going to spend more of my time on these issues for the first five, six months or so than I would if we kept doing what we're doing right now. And that concerns me. And I know that's probably not the answer you want to hear from me. But and again, if I knew exactly what I wanted to do, I would just tell you that. But I'm struggling with this because there's no perfect solution to this, other than to say, I think we need to do something. I think I would probably rather, the reality is if I could hire someone part-time, 20 hours a week to do that stuff, that's exactly what I'd want to do. Because that's affordable, that's going to get the job done. Can't, I can't hire someone for 20 hours a week because they're not going to stay very long. Nobody wants to do that. Most people want a full-time job at that point. So hence the, the conundrum. So I don't have a good solution, I guess is what I'm saying.
You know, I think first, we would have to, we gave you a certain day or whatever.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I think, I think it's worth a try between now and the time we have to adopt the budget to advertise again. See if you get any money else.
I certainly can do that.
It's not like we're going to pass a budget today.
I really don't think, it's just like, please officer, if you don't sweeten that pot a lot, you ain't going to get nobody certified or uncertified. I'm just telling you, this thing will happen.
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had a pretty competitive salary on it and I had it out there for four or five weeks or so. But we, we certainly could try.
But you have somebody that's already certified.
Correct.
And get that certification and have to maintain it every year. I mean, it's, it's going to be something they would want to come to this town and work with and for.
That's the thing, so I've been talking, like in Graham, we had our own inspector and I asked him, I said, level one, how hard is it for you to find somebody? Is it near impossible? Right now, because it's the same issue with that, a lot of trades right now, nobody's going into it. So very limited as to the pool of people we're getting. And that's where if I get somebody, I'd, I'd be like Frank, okay, well, you got a certification, but let's look at the performance end of that, or can you do the job? So I don't, I don't feel for you at all. I figured that out, it's tough. I'd like to keep support hiring before Friday.
Sure.
I just can't see that. We're a small town. We, as you know, we went.
I understood.
So I, I just think it sends the wrong message. So I'm glad to hear some.
Well, I think realizing that hesitation, I think probably the, the two best options are to either bring that person on if he's still available and interested and basically have him shadow the county inspectors for whatever period of time. And realizing we'd pay a hundred percent of that cost during that until I got confidence and he got confidence that he could do it on his own. And I'd certainly be talking with the county building inspectors and kind of getting their assessment of, of his abilities, go forth. And so there's probably, that achieves, I think, what you want to achieve. But there's some period of time, three months, six months, whatever, where we're bearing a hundred percent of the costs until we feel comfortable with that. And if we ultimately feel comfortable with that, great, we start collecting the permit fees, we're good to go. It's all, it's all good, works out wonderful. If it's just not working out, we just cut ties, then we're no worse off than we were. So basically, that's what it would be. So and then the other, if that approach maybe is desirable, the other approach I'd really like to do is explore with Cedar Point or another one of the towns about basically sharing a position and hiring a full-time person that gets all the benefits and stuff. But we cover half the cost and the other town covers the other half of the cost. So I think those are probably the two best options at this point, realizing the concerns. And I'm not trying to build an empire. I'm not trying to add another person, a Friday boy, or whatever you want to call it. I'm simply looking at it realistically about getting the, the personnel and the resources we need to do the job and, and not be in a constant cycle of trouble, basically.
What does three months give you? I mean, what does that cost us roughly? And?
Yeah, so it, it's basically 75,000 a year, give or take. So three months is going to be what, 20,000 bucks, give or take. So, so, well, that includes the benefits and everything too. So that's, that's the full cost salary that I was assuming was 50,000.
Here, what you just said, right, I think what my point would be through the splitting with another town with that person, that way we can see what we're getting and if that person's actually going to work out instead of bearing the whole entire cost.
I would not be opposed to that.
Let, let me make sure I'm explaining myself correctly. So if we did the half-position Cape Carteret, half-position another town, that's just for all the zoning, code enforcement, flood, flood damage, and that's not building inspections, just so you know that.
Here, here's my idea, we need to hire this guy, put him on probation. If he's not doing what you expect, between now and the time we adopt the budget, then we come back and revisit and say, hey, find you somebody that, that just does code enforcement and helps you, whatever. Forget the idea of, I, I don't know. I just, $75,000 is a lot of money to hire an assistant that, that, to do code enforcement. You know, I just.
I, I, I think you're right. I mean, I, so I agree with you on that. If I could hire a part-time person and pay him half that amount, work him twice a week, I'd absolutely do it. I'd have already done it.
What about Mr. Morris? Recently retired from the county, for the second time, building inspector.
Yeah.
Have you reached out to someone?
I have not spoken to him.
He seems like a guy that, older guy, that's fully a walk. That would, that's not, would be happy sitting home all day long. I sold him some farm equipment, he's an active guy, but I think he's probably at his board. I think he may be looking for something.
So in this position, the code enforcement zoning, i- is that person going to be, you'd mentioned earlier, like a UDO rewrite, is that person going to be focused on that? Is that person going to be focused on attending and doing the planning board meetings?
Yeah, so it, it depends, right? If we hire a building inspector and they also do all the zoning and code enforcement, all that stuff, then they would not do that. And I would continue to support the planning board. They would certainly attend and be knowledgeable and familiar with what they're talking about. If we hired the person that was a basically 20-hour a week zoning code, et cetera, and then the helper to me and the rest of the staff, then that person, I would assign them to the planning board and they would be the support for the planning board. I personally would like to rewrite the UDO myself so that I can bring the right amount of simplicity to it. I guess maybe the short answer is I'm anal retentive and don't trust someone else to make it as simple as I would like it to be. So I, I see myself doing that regardless. So does that answer your question?
It, it does, but here, here's what I'm trying to get. I think a person that is a building inspector and a person that also rewrites the UDO, I think those are two different people. And so what I'm trying to figure out is I'm trying to figure out where, what Frank is going to do and what this person is going to do. And if you, no matter who you hire, if you still say, well, I want to do the UDO because I feel like I could do a better job, and it's probably true. And I would rather this person do in-the-field type code enforcement, you know, quick approval of plans for permits. Yeah, I think you've got that building inspector that fits that position. What I'm saying is a building inspector that has years of experience of inspecting buildings, probably not going to be able to sit down in Microsoft Word and rewrite a UDO.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't expect either, either of those scenarios. I don't expect that person to rewrite the UDO. I expect myself to do that. But I absolutely, either scenario, I expect them to administer the UDO.
Right, to be able to read it, understand it and follow it.
And, and, and take the inquiries from customers, talk to applicants, shepherd them through the process as quickly and efficiently and as accurately as possible. So.
What you got going on? I mean, that's a one-stop shop. That increases our services exponentially.
The, the concept that you all approved in September is wonderful. Like I absolutely agree. I, I thought that it was the best solution. The only hesitation I have is I can't find, I can't find the right person that I want.
Why don't we just, we have no hurry. Stops on it. You react, advertise again for a certain period of time. If he finds, if you can't find somebody, then we'll talk about someone. We don't want for you to hire somebody that, that you're not going to be comfortable with.
Yeah, and I, and I will say, you know, I was against it when we voted that night. But I do see some benefit to having building inspections tied to our code enforcement for the reason of you kind of can go on offense at, at that point. Like right now, code enforcement for this town is a, is a defensive thing. After they're already living in the house, you go up and you say, oh, we've got this and that, you need to fix that. So if you, if you tie it to building inspections and they're not following our ordinances, they're not going to make it to the next step in building whatever they're building until they address whatever code issues just in our ordinances. So I, I, I said, like I said, I was against it that night, but I, after having thought about it, I do see some benefit. But I'm, I'm just trying to really understand what, what you want of this person. And I'm, I'm kind of inclined to agree with you, Commissioner Martin, let's just, you know, resolicit. Let's, I don't think we're in too big of a hurry. Maybe it gives you some time to figure out a little bit more about what you want. Change the solicitation up a little bit, I don't know, you know.
Or people will try this guy.
Okay.
I'm good with either of those. That's it.
Okay, all right.
And historically, building inspector would do the code enforcement too. That's one of what we had.
Right.
So they're.
Yeah, but you, and you probably gained a lot of benefit to having that.
Oh, yes. You know, like we, we are experiencing a lack of that right now.
The other, the other thing I would say to you all is that we wound up with the county inspector for some reason, right? Because we didn't have anybody to be a town building inspector, right? So we, we got, we got to, Emerald Isle got to that point. Atlantic Beach got to that point. Cape Carteret got to that point. Cedar Point got to that point. It's, no, I'm not saying we're reinventing the wheel. I just really want to underscore how difficult it is to attract and retain that person. And I, the last thing I want is musical chairs and back and forth, back and forth. So I, I will, I'll give it some more thought, take another look at it. I just honestly, I need to, I need to get those duties assigned to someone else. So I need to figure that out because if I don't, then maybe there's a grant application, not being prepared for whatever in the future or something else.
Well, this office was something that's bothered you, I think. We went through most of this budget thing and now we're kind of roadblock and I don't want to leave here until we.
No, it's all good. I mean, I, it, it's a good conversation. Again, I'm, I'm trying to learn you and you're trying to learn me. So I get it, no, it's fine, we'll figure something out. I, I'll just tell you that I will get in the groove of doing something for you that I think you want me to do. And I'm sidetracked and I'm sidetracked again.
Personally, don't expect you to do the code enforcement or whatnot or zoning for that matter.
Yeah.
Do zoning, that's fine. I, I just brought it up to the board a couple of months ago. You, you taught $75,000 as a penny and a half tax in this town. That's a lot of money to hire somebody that's not going to do anything but assist Frank Rush and, and do code enforcement. That's kind of hard to beat them.
Steve, he's not just going.
We, we didn't do that.
But use the assistant, because I get that. I understand what you're going at, but that's not, that's not a fair word to be used.
Why?
Because it's, it, we're looking at code enforcement, we're looking at all these other things to be used. Do you have inspections? You got two different animals here.
Two different animals, why?
Just said, inspection, let me finish, let me finish. You got code enforcement, you got all the UDO to, to abide by those things. Do you have inspection period of houses? Do you have inspection period of houses, decks or whatever? So you got two different things you're dealing with.
Brandon was here, he did code enforcement and building inspections.
Let me just clarify.
You have a hard time getting an inspector, but you got the certification they got to give.
Just like a police officer.
Before before that person come, but let me tell you, when you get a police officer, you don't even be comparing police officer and inspector with a whole different animal.
Let me, let me just clarify this for you. So it's not fifty thousand dollar salary plus benefits, seventy-five thousand total additional. We already have half of that budgeted right now because prior to my arrival, the strategy was that half of a person in Public Works would do those things and then the other half would be for Public Works type stuff. And so when I got here and the Public Works person left, we didn't fill that Public Works position. So we've got a vacant position right now. So you've got half of the money already budgeted, so to speak, based on the budget you all approved last year. So I just want to make sure you understand. I'm not, I don't want to be. And and that's fine. And that's what I need to hear from all six of you on these questions. What I would say to you is I'm not trying to be argumentative with you at all. I'm not trying to build an empire. I'm simply trying to tell you the reality of the situation as I perceive it. And so I I just think it's going to be really challenging. But I I will try one of those two options. I will either try to work with Cedar Point and hire someone half and half, or I will re-apply for a building inspector or maybe bring this person on and try them out on a trial basis. But it's going to take a lot of my time to make that happen and that's okay. You guys pay me well, so.
But if he's if he's generating income through permitting, he paid for that vehicle. If he's got it, just running their ass. Doing code enforcement, he's going to have work. Did you figure a vehicle in for him?
I I did not figure in a vehicle. I probably would come up with a scenario where there was some sort of mileage reimbursement or something like that initially, but there's no vehicle factored into that. Okay, well, let, an inch of time, let's move on and then perhaps we can talk about this again some more. Number twenty-two is the vegetative debris collection changes. We talked about this a lot at the beginning. You know, I think you've got a couple of options. I think we could make either one of them work. We could switch to every other month collection. And we could do that with our existing staffing. We could switch to an on-demand type service where they call in and we pick it up within a week or two. We can make either one of those work if you'd like to pursue those. Or we could stay the same with what we're doing now. But whatever we do, I think we need to better publicize the collection dates just to give people more time to get the stuff out, so.
I would say on that, I think my choice, either one would probably work. I would say maybe we initially just increase the amount that every other month and see how that is. That would definitely right, that in itself would be better for for the citizens. Now they're they're getting it six times a year rather than four. How it does on the workload for these guys, is it staying about the same? Is it increasing? I I wouldn't support anything that starts increasing their workload, where they're spending more time picking up vegetative debris when they should be doing other things. But we did it start out every other month and see how that goes, you know, how it is on their workload and it's definitely going to be better for the town.
Maybe, I mean, and it may be that we do it more frequently. It doesn't take like three days.
And then, I mean, you know, after enough six months or so of doing that, you know, we can reevaluate it. Do we need to go with on-call or whatever?
I think we certainly do that.
I would support going either route as long as in the long run, we start looking at what workload is on them and they're not spending more time out picking up vegetative debris than they are now.
Yeah, my my fear in the on-demand is going to the dump with a two scoops in a truck. I mean, that's my one thing. So I think better, better announcement of the times and then six times a year is, I think is a good way forward for that. And again, we reassess and if it looks like on-demand might be a better way to go, then we go on-demand.
I think also too, Brian, you need to, and we had this discussion, I think Zach made it mandatory that all Public Works employees obtain their C D L. I don't know what ever happened with that. You remember, anybody remember that? You remember nothing? I think it's imperative that 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 you get these guys to get, if you're a one-man show there, without you, the truck doesn't roll.
What level C D L is required?
It's not necessarily hard. I know I need to do a little bit more research. If federal government passed a law or I need to do a little more research. I'm right, you have to go to school. Get your C D L out, which is going to be a lot bigger challenge than I require. Our staff members actually go to school. I don't know. It's going to be different for many of us, rather than just a regular citizen going to drop a chief. If you're a private company, you might have a little bit more, you need to see, but I need to look into that. But I know the guys, they want to get their C D L. Figure out how to get it for them and I'm all for it.
Ryan, you do your, then you do your road testing. That's the main thing. You can do your, um, you can do your online studies and they're going to take you at the risk.
They have changed that. They have changed that point of understanding. I'll bet you know, I just found out last week that Carrot Community College was looking for students to put in their C D L school and they're paying for their books. They're paying for them to go to the school. So, but when I took mine, mine was online and I had to do my driving in New Bern. But they changed it somehow or another. You got to have certain other requirements. Now, grandfather didn't a lot of stuff, but the new people have to go through the school, actually in classroom school.
Yeah, one of my friends, like where I came from, donated ten thousand dollars to that conference community college school training C D L. They got the money. I'm old, I'm an old guy. I had chauffeur's license, so I'm my grandfather.
Well, I do think it's important that more people have it. If that's, you know, what we're going to do, more people have it than just you.
Yeah, we'll we'll absolutely do that. Make sure we get at least one other person, maybe both with that. Absolutely. Okay, well, we will proceed at this point with the increased frequency, six times a year. See how that goes and then grow from there or cut back from there depending on how it goes, so. Number twenty-three, the website improvements. Barbara's been really doing a great job just trying to clean up our website and and make it a little easier for folks to navigate. I would really like to hire someone to unveil a brand-new website for the town that's got a lot more information on it. It's a lot more user-friendly. When I first got here, I got a proposal from a local web designer. It was in the fifteen thousand dollar range. And it was honestly just more than I felt comfortable with at that time. Haven't only been here for a month or so. But it is something I'd like to try to include some funding in the budget for next year to hire someone to basically develop a brand-new website and and make it a better tool. Barbara's been doing great to improve it right now, but it it still needs some work, so.
I see you're, I would like, I don't mind looking at that. I would like to, if we're going to spend the money to upgrade the website, I would like it to give us some sort of function.
Absolutely. We're we're working on that right now with another. Yeah, no, no question. We're actually working right now to expand the use of credit cards online and in the office and that would all be integrated into a new website. Yeah, th- those are absolutely the things I want to work toward. People can do as much online with us as possible and make it easy for them to pay and I'm also, I'm just not a fan of charging that extra convenience fee. I'd rather just build that into the cost of whatever product we're offering, so. Absolutely part of the website development. And honestly, I hope it's not going to be that much, to be honest with you, but that was the one quote that I had and just something that I think we need to improve upon. Whether we do it now or next year's budget, we need to be thinking along those lines, so. Number twenty-four, the the telephone and I T improvements. In terms of the telephone improvements, got a proposal that's essentially the same cost as we currently spend for our telephone system, for a new voice-over internet protocol system with voicemail and new equipment, all the bells and whistles currently. And so it's basically cost neutral. I'll probably move on that as soon as I figure out exactly what we're doing on the building with the police department and and town staff and so forth. The I T improvements is also something that I need, really need to wait until I figure out what we're doing with the building and police and admin. But that's an area where I think we really have a need to improve our I T capabilities. I'm concerned about the security of our existing I T system. I'm concerned about the reliability of it. I'm concerned about the lack of support that we have and I'm concerned about somebody, really no one's taken ownership of it. And that's not a criticism of anybody. No one really owns it and knows how it works and what it does. I got a proposal from a firm that I worked with in Emerald Isle that does a lot of work with municipalities. It was in that thirty thousand dollar range initially and I thought that was too expensive. So I sort of hesitated on that. I'm talking with them now about ways to come up with a reduced cost that would benefit the town. One of the things that I really like about their system is that it's all completely portable and online. They back up everything. They handle all the security. They basically do it all. They're available twenty-four seven. Securities, they're handling the security. If we, for example, had a hurricane and we had to evacuate because it was a category four or five, you literally just go to your new location and you start working as if you're right here in the building. Everything's backed up. You come back, you plug it back in, you're good to go. It's like you never left. So really, I think, good system. But expensive, right? It's kind of one of those things you get what you pay for. So I'm working now to try to identify a more cost-effective way to get something like that. And regardless of whether we do something with that company or whether we do something with another company, I would say that that's honestly my top priority for us in terms of being an organization heading into the next budget year. I sort of plugged in twenty to thirty thousand right now, going to try to get that as low as possible, but just want you to be aware of that and be thinking about that. And that's something I'm going to try real hard to incorporate into the budget next year. And if you have other suggestions or ideas, I'm all ears, but I really think we've got to do something better than what we're doing currently. Any questions or concerns about that or ideas or?
But your telephone and I T is just like the lines in the wall. You guys don't have any servers or anything like that, right?
We've got a bunch of equipment in the closet in there and in the police department that I couldn't tell you exactly what it is. We've got a collection of equipment that honestly, no one really has a good understanding of what it is and how it works, so much so that it was hard for me just to get an analysis done to be able to have them take a look at it and do what we're doing. And so we're getting by. It's working, but I honestly, every day come in worried that something's going to crash and not work and I'm not going to know what we're doing, so. We've got to do something, I think, going forward, so.
Yeah, I just got an email from you, so, you know, it's a secure document.
That's happened with mine a couple of times. I know, Don, I think you called me one night. Somebody sent an email out saying, hey, can you send me this gift card or some crap like that?
I could all look from you all the time.
I think the the biggest thing is if you get something that looks fishy, just don't click on it, whatever you do.
Oh, it has her signature. It has her signature block on it.
And they responded back and filled out the form, a new banking account, everything.
I do remember that we had, Tony Reese actually was investigating, he was a main investigator, did a lot of administrative work. And they hacked his computer. Frank, I don't know if you were, yeah, you were at work. I don't know if you remember this one, but they hacked his computer and held it for ransom. And locked it up. So he had a lot of stuff, but we didn't have V C three then, but it was. So he lost everything on that computer, which he had cases, so it was, it was, it was a nightmare. So what I like about, if we, I mean, if it works this way, Frank, I think it's a wonderful idea because it's content, don't it back it up every day?
It it's all backed up automatically and it's all housed at multiple locations, different different locations in the country.
And and you don't house anything. I mean, what what do you house?
It's all virtual.
Because you use Office three sixty-five right now.
That's correct.
And I mean, that's a cloud service.
That that's a cloud service. It's very difficult to get support through Microsoft and Office three sixty-five. So this system basically takes the whole desktop and makes it virtual. And when you're using it, you're essentially sending keystrokes over the internet and everything is hosted someplace else. And so the other thing about it is the police department, we've got, I think we do have a server in the police department and we've got records management software there that's probably dated. And at at bare minimum, I'd like to move that to a cloud-based system so that we've got that covered and don't need a server over there. And there's some benefits to us all being in the same building because you've only got one system instead of two at that point in time. So it all, I think, is is dependent on exactly what we do with the police department and the administrative staff, so. I I'll keep working on that unless someone's got significant concerns about that. I really wanted to make you aware and let you know that's probably my top priority in all honesty going forward, so. Number twenty-five, the employee compensation. The projection that I gave you for next year that showed the roughly twenty-five thousand dollar surplus, I did include a three percent cost of living increase in there, placeholder at this point. So every, that's a cost of about thirty thousand dollars. Basically, every one percent is about a ten thousand dollar cost to the organization. And that includes all the percentage-driven benefits like social security and Medicare and retirement and so forth. And so I've got that in there at three percent right now. Just be looking for your feedback on what you think we ought to do. Typically, what I do is look at the change in the Consumer Price Index as late as I possibly can, usually the March or the April. And I try to match that. Now, in this this day and age with inflation being so high, that's probably not realistic for us, but that's generally what I like to do because I want people to stay current, feel like they're not falling behind. Ideally, I want all the employees to feel like they're getting ahead and doing better. Who knows what inflation will be in a few months, but right now it's seven percent-ish. You all, I'm sure have heard those things. I'm not at all suggesting we would do seven percent. I just want you to know, one, every one percent's ten thousand dollars and that's the cost that we'll be looking at. I know that you guys, I think, approved some pretty significant increases for the organization last year. I think those were very helpful to everyone. So I don't think anything's too far out of whack in terms of the existing positions. It's really, I think, going to come down to. It's really, I think, going to come down to what you think is a reasonable cost of living adjustment for folks when we get to that point. So the other thing is, is the health insurance, always trying to make sure that we don't erode that coverage for the employees. And where I can, I'm always trying to enhance it if possible. Tough thing to manage. I plugged in a 10% increase. Who knows, you know, with inflation being 7% in general, that may be, that may not be enough. We'll get those cost estimates probably in April from the league of municipalities. Going to be meeting next week, I think, with representative to talk about some Blue Cross Blue Shield products. If that's something that's cheaper or a better value, I want to at least look at those things and I may come back to you with those proposals as well. Any, any general thoughts on compensation? What would you, what's your general thinking?
Probably 3% total is probably something there.
Yeah, the government just gave us 4.3 or something like that. Say 3s right there.
Okay.
I'll go with 3%.
3% dozen eggs.
A dozen eggs. Well, we'll work toward that and then I'll report back to you on the CPI as we get a little bit closer at that time and can pull all the numbers together. Number 26, just future special events. My understanding is that you all last year talked about trying to produce four events per year. I just wanted to make sure that's still what you'd like to do or if you want to try to do more or less. Some of it is just me wanting to hear it from you guys directly. That's what I was told.
I think four a year is a good number to look at. I mean, obviously it'd be great to do something out here every single month, but it takes a lot of work on staff every time you do it. And I feel in years past, staff has probably been overworked on some of these events where they spent all their time preparing for it. They'd all having to come out and work all day Saturday for the event and then be back to work Monday. I think four years.
I would say one or two.
Yeah, I'm kind of.
Let's, let's, let's do one thing and do it well or do two things.
Or I would not be opposed to that.
And that there, there, yes, less, less stress on staff as well.
This, when this, when special events first started, we had a special biz committee and all that stuff. We, the first thing we had was the fall festival. Very, very, first year it was putting on. We agreed at that time, I'll say we, commissioners, not in the boardroom, agreed that that was our signature, should be our signature event. I still think that should be our signature event.
The fall festival.
But I haven't attended one in the last couple of years. I just felt that it turned into a glorified flea market type atmosphere. I think, I think maybe more attention to the theme of the fall festival and expand the fall festival, even if we have to rent some more property to have it and have, you know, make it a big deal. And, and, and the Easter egg thing, that doesn't take that much time. And Santa Claus to visit. We don't have to do the decorating like we used to do out here and all that stuff. But I think the fall fest is our signature event and I think it needs to be expanded. I mean, by things like car shows, corporate car show, more bands, things of that nature, and more fall themed type things. It's not just seeing a bunch of vendors sitting up here making money.
So focus more on the quality than the, and the range of offerings.
And the first one, and note, I'm not taking, you take away from any of the staff, they've worked hard on that. But I think ones that were here, I think they may agree that first one. It was phenomenal, even though the bouncy house, everybody remember failed. That was a nightmare. The kids were trapped in the bounce house. I was on the tractor and it was my generators, brand new generators. They overheated them and that run over there. It was, it was a nightmare. She scared me to death.
That's an insurance nightmare now.
But it was a bad, it was a piece of crap bouncing house. But, but, but where the staff does it, gets together or we bring the special biz committee back or events, whatever. I just think it needs to be expanded and the quality.
Okay.
What is bigger, the fall festival or the watermelon festival? Which was bigger?
So my thought, which kind of coincides with yours, with the fall festival. The fall festival could be bigger because the weather is nicer. It's, exactly. It's hot in the sun. Now, if we were able to somehow cover the stage, our musical acts could play longer. You're right about the flea marketing kind of stuff, but this year we, we expanded it and had the PMI's wife show and that was well received. Our biggest problem is space.
Space is the problem. Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's definitely a problem. I know one year Miss Hope Flood used that lot over there and that worked out. That's where we had the pancy house. It worked out real good. It worked out real well, but we had that extra space over there. Yeah, I mean, a signature event. I mean, most towns have a signature event. We don't. It just helps us schedule. I just think one big event, the fall festival.
So how does the watermelon festival fit into that thought then? Do we still want to do that or do we want to move away from that?
Zach came to me and asked me about it. I said, look, every town has a watermelon festival and a trick to that. And I think when I first met Richard Morgan, he came to me and he said, I came to watermelon festival. There's no watermelons there. I mean, what's up with that? You have to time it when these boats have watermelons are right. You never know when that's going to happen. And it's just, I don't know, it's hot.
Hot, that's the big thing.
People go, the bands don't like it. They stay out of tune.
So that's the other thing with bands is I'm trying to get close about putting the cover over that. Because even when we had the last band, I mean, showed no rain on the forecast whatsoever. The next thing you know, it was a rain cloud right over the state. Go across the street, no rain. Go to McDonald's, no rain. It was raining. And so now they're scurrying because we didn't even have a tarp or anything.
We used to have a big deal, Paxton, recall, I'm picking her, the car show, Mac Daddy's and all, that was a huge, huge thing. The band, I mean, I just think it could be enhanced.
So what? I'm sorry.
I agree. I like the quality over. It's more work I got, but you go anywhere and see vendors. You go anywhere, matter of fact, one of the big, not only is that one of the biggest things I've heard from people in town, in general, in the state, this, like in North Carolina, every time you go to a festival, no matter where it is, it's the same thing. You call it whatever festival you want, but it's not, it's just a, you know, vendors sitting around the corner. But I think that I tend to agree that what we do with fall, I don't really, doesn't really matter to me which festival it is, but the weather is nice in the fall.
I agree with that.
And quality, like I said, the quality is, is what will make it a special event. And it doesn't take that much, I don't think, to stand out from the crowd.
We had a fly fisherman here, that first one, Nigling, was that, that first one, that fly fisherman, he was out here and he taught the kids how to.
Yeah, exactly. Then we had the beekeeper, the beekeepers organization, Monza County came over and did.
That's not something I've ever seen anywhere and the kids love that.
See, we had, you know, we had plans for Sam Ward barbecue to come down here and do a huge barbecue at that time, you remember? Isn't there just so much you could add to it because of the weather, so much pressure? Make it the biggest you want.
So what I'm hearing from you is the fall festival is the, the big event. Try to make it better, bigger, more broader range of activities for people to enjoy. Stick with something small at Easter, something small at Christmas time, and then the watermelon festival. Are we, are we doing that or are we not doing that?
I think Mac Daddy's has taken over the Easter egg.
Okay, well, that's even better.
Just once you.
I didn't mean to jump the gun, but we're talking about exactly what I've asked to talk about 27D. And C is the independent state fireworks display. Last year, the manager of Emerald Isle came to me and said, the period will let us shoot fireworks this year. Will you let us do it at Mac Daddy's? And I said, you need to talk to Mac. So we met. And Mac always generous, said, of course. And, and we initiated planning and it was kind of last minute then. And the response from Zach Stecky is our budget is already set. We have nothing to do with this. Now, on one hand, you may say, well, Kate Carteret is being fiscally responsible by getting this great thing in town and we're not putting a penny out for it, except for in kind participation. But I would ask that Kate Carteret consider, it was, it was kind of embarrassing to me that Kate Carteret didn't put in a penny. Although I understood, because the lady did say it. But now the planning is starting for 2023. One private company put in $20,000. The town of Emerald Isle put in $20,000 worth of fireworks. Mayor Dale, Dale Sowers was so embarrassed that Phil Peir didn't contribute that he put in $1,000 of his own money. But if the town wants to participate and have some sort of watermelon presence over there July 3rd, great or, or not, but if the Kate Carteret town wants to have a booth of some participation. Now, they're not allowing vendors except for food trucks. They are allowing military because of the flyover. If those squad rooms want to have a presence and they're encouraged in VFW to handle parking for donations. But if Kate Carteret wants to participate in that, welcome, welcome in any possible way. As not only as part of the planning, but as contributions to the festival itself. And that would eliminate that, you know, watermelon festival. Right, if Kate Carteret wants to sell watermelons or have any kind of a booth for, I don't know, promotion of town goals. That's, that's part of the planning. That was just the one item and I, I will welcome any participation.
Well, I think, actually, I was unaware of that. Zach Stecky told you that we had ample funds in our special tents. To my knowledge, we didn't issue a last board. Sorry. I'm all in for doing our part and paying our share.
But now's, now's the time to consider. Thank you.
I just, I just want to say I'm proud that we didn't put any money, you know, and, and looking after our stewardship. But at the same point, we have, just like this year, and frankly, I had a meeting of them about if they wanted to add another band or have a sound guy, then we would definitely offer them to pay for that. So it's not a matter we don't want to. And I can't speak for Zach to hear what he said because I wasn't aware of that. But we're going to do what we can. But if it wasn't for the grace of the private part of it and Emerald Isle, this wouldn't be happening. Because we can't, but to put a little something in there and this, we're still waiting to see, is there a need at the end? And if there is, we need to, you know, pick a thousand dollars or whatever. I don't think this board have a problem. Because I went around to the various businesses over here and asked, was it a plus or a minus for this event? Because that's who I'm concerned about is the businesses. And the biggest thing I got was, man, I wish we'd know how popular it's going to be with, you know, Dr. Annie, especially Julie Mox. He says, I'll be ready. Says, we got caught off guard. We didn't realize they were going to get as much business as he did. So in that aspect, it did what I wanted to see happen was that it helped our businesses. And if it was a deterrent, and I'll say this, it's a deterrent anyway to Mac Daddy's and we need to have it somewhere else. And I'll support that if it becomes a burden or like I say, a negative thing. But right now I just see all positives from this. And like I say, if the town, if there's something we can do to help, we get, as you know, we've been planning this all year. At the next meeting, if there's a need, then we hopefully will be there.
Well, it definitely comes in the Mac Daddy's income and that was the main reason Peir quit doing it. It shuts down the driving range for a full day July 4th weekend to prepare for it. It shuts down the driving range the day of, which this year is planned for Monday, July 3rd. So most people who come to the area on weekends have gone back, but still it's a huge, because I understand it's once versus not been able to handle one issue.
Yeah, they had an issue. But being a Monday, that's what we were looking at with that advance was being a Monday. I think there's going to be, I think it's going to be bigger than we're anticipating because a lot of people want to take a long weekend with being on Tuesday this year. They're going to be off on Monday. Like I say, anything I think that we can do to help, you know, smooth that through. I was very pleased with how everybody's getting along and how these meetings are going just for that event so far.
I think last time, Emerald Isle here, boat here stopped fireworks with Frank, they, Stanley changed the sign or this over there. And he disowned the sound, remember that?
We, we had a kumbaya though afterwards, yeah.
No more town people. Yeah.
Well, I, I, um, we'll work toward improving the fall festival and making that sort of the signature. Still think about Easter and Christmas and then we'll just maybe get together and talk about the watermelon festival and see whether to logically incorporate that with the fireworks or if there's some other way to improve that, if you're comfortable with that and certainly come back to you. So, so number 27, just really seven different things here. I'll go through very rapidly. One is I'm anal retentive. I don't like a tax rate that has a 0.25 in it or 0.5. So I'd like to round it to something that's a full number. I don't want to round it to 22, so I'd like to round it to 21. If we do that, basically costs $10,500. I think we probably could figure that out. If we do it, great. If we don't, that's fine too. Just something I'm thinking about and going to be working on. The mobile telephone stipends, we've got some employees who are carrying around two different phones. I purposely don't want to carry two phones. So that's why I wrote my contractors to get a stipend and all my personal private stuff is on here with my work stuff. I'd like to extend that same offer to other employees as well. It's pretty much cost neutral for the most part, so. And then we also don't have to buy phones. It helps the employee a little bit. You're putting a few more dollars in their pocket for something they would have spent money on anyway. So the fireworks display, what I had written up in here is, you know, hopefully we can make a contribution toward the fireworks display. Maybe for the music, as the mayor mentioned, that's, I'm thinking somewhere in the $1,000 to $2,000 range, if folks are comfortable with that. The boat ramp permit program, just wanted to bring up a couple of ideas. One is, you know, we've capped it at 285 permits. We actually went up to 300 this year. Wherever the number is, 285 or 300, those expire on June 30th, right before the busy July 4th weekend, busy boating season. Is there any interest in maybe just changing the dates for that? Like maybe make a calendar year basis, January 1 to December 31, or maybe it's April 1 to March 31st or something else so that it's not coming up right when people want to get their permits and get out on the water and so forth. And the other thought that we've talked about is there's a certain point in the year at which the boat ramp's not very busy. And maybe we ought to just sell permits for like the last three or four months or whatever. And if you change that timeframe, maybe just add a little bit more revenue to the town without burdening the site and the facility and loading up. So wanted to throw those ideas out there. I think from a budget standpoint, it's pretty much revenue neutral. Because if we change the date, say, just hypothetically, it becomes January 1st to December 31st, the revenue's still coming in next fiscal year. It just maybe makes it a little bit easier to manage it at a time of the year that's not so busy. I think Commissioner Martin's point is a good one though, that maybe people aren't here in December when they would be here in June. So that'd be something for you guys to think about as well. But really just trying to basically set that up for a less busy time of the year for folks. The, the planning board vacancies.
I'm sorry, the last one that I had requested to speak on was 27D, the boat ramp permit.
Sure.
Would the town consider two different types of permits? There are some people who would like to use the boat ramp who don't want to park. So perhaps a two tiered, one, people who live in the neighborhood who are therefore paying taxes already or use to rent the ramp from me but don't want to park, they can launch their boats, go home, take their boat, I mean, their trailer and car, just an idea.
I think that's a good idea that we should consider because if you're not parking there.
I think that's a good idea that we should consider, because if you're not parking there, for people that do park there, that we're the ones taking up the space. So it's going to be, I don't know how that looks, but.
How are you going to?
I don't know. I, I, I thought of that too. Well, all they're really doing is launching and then recovering and driving away. So.
Most of the ones that do that don't have permanent. You see plenty of that happening if you set it in a home.
Yeah. Well, then maybe that's the two tiers. I don't know.
I tell you, if we keep tweaking this boat ramp thing, the initial concept was to increase the capacity. We've succeeded in doing that, but we raised the prices. If we keep tweaking and tweaking and adding and adding, people's going to get the bill up with that. We scammed them just, just to get the permit fees up. And I don't hope that ever happened. That's just my opinion.
Well, let me shoot through these last three things here. We can talk about any of these seven, some more after that. The, the planning board vacancies. I think I had sent you copies of the applications from the last round a couple of years ago. We have a vacancy that's coming up in February, another one's coming up in May. Both of those individuals have indicated they don't wish to, uh, serve anymore. We can do this really any way you like. You all can just identify people in the community informally and make a motion to appoint somebody. Or we can take applications, uh, from folks who are interested in serving. You all can then informally decide, uh, who you'd like to nominate for those positions. Or I've seen some communities that advertise and then they actually interview each of the candidates. And that's obviously more time consuming, but folks, some folks do that as well. Either approach, I think is fine. I just want to know what your preference is, um, going forward. And then the other question that came up is the whole idea of the planning board's work plan. Do you want them to, uh, work on anything that they think is helpful to the town and bring ideas and recommendations to you? Or would you prefer that they only work on specific things that you task them with? And so something to think about there as well. The last two things on here, the, the golf and dolphin drive improvements. I know that there was, um, discussion about that and probably not too long before I got here. How important is it for us to work on that issue or is it not important at all? Is that something we should work on? I often hear from people that somebody needs to fix that street. I imagine you all have heard that plenty of times before as well. So I know there's a history. And then the last thing is the enterprise fleet leasing program. I'm not, I'm not particularly a fan of that program. I think there's some value in it in terms of, uh, just being able to hand it off to someone else and let them handle everything. But really all it is, is just a financing tool and a management tool. And at the end of the day, it's pretty much just borrowing money to buy the cars. And so, um, for example, the interest rate that we're paying right now is 4% on the one. The other one's 7.75, um, because interest rates have changed a lot over the course of the last year. So, um, in the future, uh, first of all, I don't see us buying any new vehicles anytime soon. Cause I think we're in pretty good shape right now, uh, in terms of police cars or pickup trucks and things like that. But in the future, um, I probably would just prefer to stagger the vehicle replacements as needed, pay cash for them and not finance them. That's my approach. Other people obviously like the enterprise fleet leasing program. One of the things that I'm contemplating, um, is that there might be some value in just paying off the lease agreement. Basically $174,000. We would ultimately take that money from fund balance. That frees up $55,000 of capacity in your budget next year and just gives you more flexibility. Honestly, not quite sure how I feel about that right now, but it's just another tool that I wanted to just point out to you guys that might be helpful going forward. With that, I'll stop talking and please share your thoughts with me on these seven or anything else, so.
Frank, with everything we've got, we're all today. I wouldn't be a fan of taking that under 70 without talking about the general. And another reason for that is because we've always, for the last several years, we kind of had a so-called pact that we would never use any reserve funds in our budget. It's kind of going back, if you will, and changing the budget that we already approved if you wanted to do that. So I'm against that.
Understood.
It's my personal opinion. Planning board, uh, I think it's in our ordinances or something that, that we, that the applicants fill out applications and present them to the board. Is that true? Is that the way?
Yeah, truthfully, I don't know what the ordinance says.
I think that's the way it works. Is they feel, they did last time they filled out applications and I think they already, we've still got their application right there. Okay, so then the board was, was write down the person's name.
Did you like that process?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
As far as directing the planning board, I don't know what other towns do. But I would, I'd prefer the town manager tasking the planning board with, with certain things. I, because he certainly knows more about. I think it needs to be done than what the, this board commissioner does. I speak for myself. Like you do, you have a better grasp on a lot of things than I do. I wouldn't be telling them to feed on, not, I'd be totally lost. So I mean, I don't, I'm not savvy as, for instance, Karen Watts, who, uh, planning board, they serve. Last thing is.
Well, I, I think, I think the fundamental question, reasonable question that the planning board has is, um, how aggressive do you want them to be in addressing issues that they think are a concern? Or taking on new projects? Like, you know, for example, they're talking about things like, uh, preservation of trees, for example, and coming up with an ordinance like that. And I think they're asking themselves, yeah, we'd be willing to work on that, but does the board of commissioners really want us to work on that? You know, so it's kind of the chicken and the egg question, so to speak. And there's, there's no right or wrong answer, really just a matter of what your preference is as the board of commissioners. Certainly whatever initiatives we're working on, I'm going to bring, uh, whatever we're working on at the staff level that you all have directed me to work on. I'm going to take it through them, get their comments, get their recommendation, what have you, and then bring it back to you. So that's absolutely going to happen. I think it's really more a question of how, how active do you want them to be or not be on their own? I, I certainly can assist. And, and so, yeah, I mean, for example, the, the question came up at the last planning board meeting about the whole park improvements thing. And what I suggested, they wanted to appoint a committee, um, to work on park improvements then. And what my suggestion to the planning board was, you know, that, that may be perfectly fine, but let me talk with the board of commissioners about that and see if they're comfortable with that. So I kind of interject where I can, but at the end of the day, I'm not their boss. You're their boss.
In your best experience, being with three other municipalities and towns, what works best?
I would like to see, I can take what I would like to see. I would love for them to be thinking about these things. That's what they do. But if they've got a project like that, that you are not sure, you know, that they want to work on. I think that should be presented to the board at our meeting, just like their notes are. And then we can give them guidance to go forward or to not waste their time. Is that? The true, like the tree thing, like I'm sure y'all spent a lot of time talking about that, but based on our earlier discussion, I don't think that would go anywhere. So they wasted a bunch of time on that.
I, I think, I, I kind of am along the lines with, with you, Charlie. I, I, I think that, um, I mean, kind of how you do it right now is you, you ask us and then you, you know, you kind of go back and forth like with just asking us. And, and I, I like that, but I do think that, uh, some direction, um, would be good and I, I'm not opposed to that. Them, I'm not creative at all. I have no creative bone in my body. So if they come up with an idea and they, hey, hey, we want to check this out. If they want to come to the board and ask in their brief, I'm, I have no problem saying, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Or no, I don't know that that's where we need to be worried right now. I mean, to be honest with you, with as much as we got going on with stormwater and getting these engineering firms in here. I don't know that the tree thing is, and I talked to you about this, the, the regulatory aspect of, of trees is as important as some other things that we could be doing. So to, to summarize, I think I'm good with, with, you know, if they have a creative idea, come and ask us. We can go direct approval right there. Otherwise I like how it's working with you, you know. You know, I was at that planning board meeting. You said, hey, I want to talk to the board and tabled it. Then you asked us right here and, you know, here we are. So I like that, how that works.
Okay, good. Sounds like what Charlie's saying also. And I, and I personally prefer that as well, but if you had a different idea, I just want to know that and I'll do whatever you like.
Yeah.
But we don't need to chasing every good idea that comes out of somebody's mouth. We just don't, it's not a good use of their time. It ends up with, it ends in bad things.
Well, we can use them. I mean, you know, there's things like, um, you know, there's things that they come up with and the room will be full and everybody's like, that's a bad idea, you know? That's good for us to know too. Hey, the community objects to this wholeheartedly. I think that's good to know too. So we can, we can leverage that where they can talk it out, workshop it out. You know, our, our meetings are a little more formal, so I, I do think there's some benefit. It's a strategic, you know, thing for what they work on.
So, so kind of steer them based on what my perception is of the board's wishes on an issue. And if there's a question, just come to you guys and say, hey, this is what they're thinking about. Fair enough. I'm good with that. I just want to make sure you all.
I'll get back to you. As you know, cannot run our bonds to that road unless it's been followed up on state standard. Axon Road and Swain. Somebody has, somebody has to bring it up. We hashed this out recently.
We had two issues, which was, I think it was a year and a half ago they came and they asked us if we would take it over if. And we didn't give them a, a yes or no, because here again, work had been done. But I think the consensus is, yes, we would more consider it that way. And then the last year he came and it was like, well, would you give us $75,000?
Yeah.
To fix the road? And then we'll, no, don't thank me, we'll give it to you. Uh, and that's where I'm like. To me, you've let something, that's your property and, and why should the town be responsible for your lack of maintenance over the years? I don't see us running to be to save it for that. I want to help and if people aren't happy, I think the board would to take that over if it's brought up to standards.
Seems like a code compliance issue.
Is there, is there any, is that a priority? Is that something you want me to actively pursue and work on?
They've already told us that last time, Tia alluded to, they, they know what shape they're going to do anything like. We didn't give them $75,000.
I think they're doing a minimum, they haven't done a jet, apparently they were supposed to at least go fill the potholes.
Well, is there any requirement that they keep that road up? I mean, certainly there's got to be some ordinances that if you own a road like that.
It's a liability issue for me or anything else. Some kind of bond or something has run into around the end of.
What I'm saying is we're going to be, we're going to be in this situation for as long as we allow. So it's going to be riddled with potholes. Nobody's going to do anything and we're just going to be at a point where nobody.
It's just a, a negative impact on the town because people assume it's our road.
It's true.
I think if anything, we need to look at the Enterprise Drive is basically of the standard of my opinion. I don't see puddles coming off, but sooner or later, we're going to have to go to the back back there. Maybe that's, maybe it's Enterprise Drive we need to be talking about.
There's some issues there as well.
Well, 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 I think, I think so, you, you're both making very good points. So to your point, if nobody does anything, it's probably going to be like that 10 years from now, 20 years from now. And so I'm wondering if, just from a practical standpoint, is there a way that we can basically move that along and try to do something? And like, for, and like, for example, is there value in maybe the town saying, hey, if you improve the quality of the road? And you bring it up to town standards and you pay $75,000 or whatever the number is, the town be willing to build a sidewalk there? For example, which I think we could eligibility do after it was dedicated to the town. So it's just those kinds of creative approaches to try to move the needle and get it done. Because otherwise it's probably going to sit there like that. Cause I think the truthful answer is, there's probably no way to make them improve it, um, as it is right now. So that's the only reason I bring it up. And if it's a priority, great, I'll work on it. If it's not, then I won't worry about it. I got plenty, plenty of other things on the plate, but I just, it's an issue that keeps coming up. And I wanted to get a sense for where you guys are at on it, so. Okay, so not, not a high priority then it sounds like for you guys.
They want to come back to us to make it more worthwhile.
Okay.
For us to do that. I mean, if it was my business and that was my driveway, then I feel that's my responsibility to make sure that I can take that to keep the business coming to me.
Why does that road continually develop those problems?
That's a good question.
I think there's, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's like 10 or 12 entities involved in the maintenance agreement. That's probably part of the, it's hard enough to get two people to agree, let alone 10 or 12, so.
Sub base as well, you know, I saw from the court samples, ordinary traffic. But then you add, just like with Enterprise Drive, you've got all the semis that have come in. And so you've got this heavier traffic. So that's a different standard. And to me, where you're sure you've got the rock base or the aggregate, you know, there need to be at least an eight to a 12 inch binder. More thicker substance to pull up to those loads. So that might be an issue too. It's just, you know, yeah, you come in here, you do the potholes and you just throw a, a two inch skim over it, but you're still having to fix the problem. It's just like there's a sub base, I don't know if it's a pipe, if it's the water, if it's a storm drain down there. When you turn to go into loads off Enterprise Drive, that's a continual sinkhole there as well. And I don't think anybody's really figured out exactly what that is yet.
I personally believe it was the installation of the loads of improvements.
The storm service sewer over there?
And, and they're unwilling and they have never, when Swain sold him that property, he didn't make them responsible for any road maintenance.
That's not good. And here again, my calls, it's not their road. Why should they have any interest in foremanaging it? So I, I get it. But those are things that need to be addressed as well when we're dealing with not just one property owner, but several.
Is there any kind of thing that's spawned over there for the two brothers?
The basis for the maintenance on Golf and Dolphin Drive was set up by Swain's attorneys. And it revolves around the square footage of the building. So the heavy hitter in that was Swain, who has the shopping center. And he, because he didn't make Walgreens responsible, he pays for their square footage. And then the liquor store, he pays for that square footage. But so far he has not signed up for the Starbucks to be added to that, nor has the vet, even though you're both supposed to.
Well, the vet, uh, you asked the vet for a blank in here one night that if she, she was going to do her part, she agreed to.
Yes, and I recently, this month, sent her a email saying, now that the boat ramp buildings are complete, please give your square footage to the attorney. So you can start being responsible for maintenance. And I will approach Swain again. And by the way, I had nothing to do with that proposal, which Jason Swain made to the town in January 2022. Didn't know about it, wasn't consulted about it, but that is much wider than 60 feet. And my idea was to take some of that pavement up and put stone more places in there. And if the town wanted to build side of old sign, but that went nowhere. But I will approach Swain again. And that might be tied into conversation if you approach Swain to buy the eight acres. I certainly wouldn't, but something was done about Golf and Dolphin first.
So there's a lot involved there, Frank.
Yeah, I, I, well, I gathered as much, but it's helpful just to hear you guys talk about it and hear it firsthand, so.
You're getting caught up in a lot of things. So I appreciate the effort you're taking.
Are there other things that I didn't include on this agenda that you think we ought to be thinking about for the budget? Or for the longer term for that matter? Are there other priorities that you all have?
I think, I want to thank you for what you did today. I think this is very, very helpful for us to sit down and talk generically about all of these things to give you ideas of kind of where we want to go. I like some very helpful. And I, I, I want to point out to you too, everybody actually, just 30, 40 minutes ago, we were talking about IT issues, computers, spam emails. As soon as we finished that and went to the next topic, employee compensation, I got an email on my town email account from Heather, which I got confirmed Heather did not send to me. And it's a remittance invoice receipt. Want me to view a document here as respectively, it's got Heather Leffinwell, the town clerk, got her phone. town clerk, got her phone number and all, it looks, it looks like it came from her, and if I click her name on the email, where the from, it shows me her town email, not some Google address or something, so, I mean, it's a one draft secured document received because of your document here.
Yeah.
Now, we, we just finished talking about that when I suddenly got this email.
There's really nothing you can.
What we're talking about this, Andrew, essentially, I got a question for everybody here. I was unable to, I was unable to, to get all of my town accounts for over two months, Frank, and everybody will try, finally got, do you guys have to get a code to access your?
When they updated through Microsoft for this?
Yeah.
Because I had the same question, so I went, somebody said, what do you do? So you have to go back in, Microsoft updates this program on your device, so you have to go in there and put a code in that they send you to update, to update.
We tried to upgrade several times.
Yeah, I had a nightmare with it.
It's a crazy thing, in other, in other words, I'll get on my laptop, and if I want to access my email here, it'll go, send it, it, it has to send me a six-digit code.
Every time?
Every time.
Well, I don't have that.
What I had to do, and I've dealt with, like, so we had the same issue when I looked at Hillsborough, was we had to download this authentication.
We had that.
And, which I had trouble, like you did, the first time, it took me several goes to get it to do a thing.
My son was an IT guy, and, and he couldn't fix it, we, I downloaded that app several times, I think Frank, we, I don't know how Frank got me on, but it's, it's a hassle to.
I'm not sure I know either, I was just happy we got it.
I have issues sometimes on my laptop, I've never, I can always get on it on the phone, but there are times I get on my laptop, I can't, I'm like logging down, then I log back in, then I get on my phone.
I never had that problem at all.
I don't put, see, I don't put that stuff on my laptop, I just use my phone only, and if I want to get to my laptop, I email to my laptop on another address, I don't have to deal with two devices.
Yeah, and I think.
Well, I was able to access it previously by my, my old Android, but without a code, I accuse Frank of screwing it all up.
I tell you what, my experience with a better IT program, all you have to do is call 1-800 number, they go in there and they fix it all for you, you sit back and relax.
Exactly, I agree, I totally agree with that.
Yeah, that's the thing.
I want to echo one, I was a little apprehensive about today, but I think it's probably the best.
It's a good format.
About six years I've been on this board, I think the minds we put together today, and the outcome's been fantastic, I'm very happy, very happy with everything that was accomplished today, like you and your staff are putting it all together, something's changed, and I'm looking forward to more.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I mean, I, I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to accomplish the goals that you have for the community, and this is an important part of that process. And like I said, I mean, this is the beginning of the process, not the end, I mean, it was a good discussion, it was incredibly helpful to me, so thank you for giving me six hours of your time today to do that, and hopefully it's going to pay off in the long run with something you'll be happy about.
We need to put up a raises or anything like that for us, that's for Frank.
Are we going to do this again?
Um, so, so, the way that I typically operate, and I think has worked well in my career, and what I plan to do here is I start the budget process every year with like this. First of all, hopefully I'm doing a good job listening to you all throughout the year and get a better sense, I think it's going to be much easier next year than it was today, just because I've been here for a longer time. But I basically, I'm going to take all the feedback from you all today, I'll summarize it, and I'll send you kind of just the high points at some point in the next day or two, take all that, I'm going to work with the staff, and we're going to develop some of these ideas a little bit more, try to include money in the budget for the things that you guys have just generally indicated as a priority for you, spit it out with a 21-cent tax rate, or certainly 21.25 at the most, I'll present that to you in May, let you look at that, hopefully you look at it and you say, yeah, he did good, he listened, you know, he, he dealt with the things that we told him were important to us, and then we'll have some, one, two, however many meetings you think you need between May and June to go through it, and if you want to adjust something or tweak it, we can do that, and we'll have additional information, and there's always some 11th hour curveball that comes out somewhere along the way, too, and then hopefully you'll be in a position to adopt it at your meeting in June, and we'll be good to go, and then that'll be the work plan for next year, and hopefully we'll get all that stuff done and start on new stuff after that, so that's my, that's my process, I think it's worked pretty well over time, and, but if at any point in time you need something different or something more, just tell me that, and I'll try to adjust in whatever way is helpful.
Thank you all for being here, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Do you need a motion?
Do you have to officially adjourn?
Do you need a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Second, second, all in favor?
All in favor.
And thank you for being here, too.